I'll call the Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. Let the record show today is March 6th, 2019. The time is 9 o'clock a.m. I wonder if I could call on Mr. Bob to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you do that, sir?
Oh, God bless.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
It's my pleasure. Should I ask you ahead of time? And I... Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Candor.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Here.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper, present.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
I have none.
Nor do I. Thank you. Audience introductions. Ms. Jackie?
Dr. Bubus for the Sentinel.
Lynn LeBree.
Airport.
Bob Giacomelli, Airport.
Thank you. Welcome. Glad to have you all here. I do not believe we have many minutes to approve.
Yep.
Commissioner Items. Commissioner Prince, would you care to start, sir?
Well, since yesterday, the only thing I did was what I was doing. We attended the review of the architectural firm proposals and set out the standards...
Bless you. Excuse me.
Set out the standards on how we're going to go ahead and interview and make some decisions as to a couple that didn't meet the criteria. And I thought we have a very enlightening meeting. Of course, both of you were there, so I'm talking to the rest of you.
I had a totally different perspective, no?
Yeah. What meeting were you in?
Commissioner Candor?
Yeah, I was there too, of course, and it was a good deal. Good news is, we had a lot of interest. Seven, if you didn't know it, we had seven companies bid on it, put a bid in. And one out of state was... So it's a pretty big deal that there's... I didn't realize there were that many companies that are in the business of designing justice centers and jails, but there are. That's good because it benefits us. And it's competition. You could see what competition does because, you know, all their fees were, you know, they presented competitive stuff for us. So that's really good news. And let's see, what else are they... Oh, got the ads in the paper. So, you know, it is true, the last two meetings on the Prosperity Plan are next Tuesday and Thursday. Task Force meeting followed by the joint task force community meeting. That will be at Tony's on Thursday. And the other will be at Ranchers Roost.
Tuesday the 12th?
Did I say that? No, I didn't.
I said Tuesday and Thursday.
Tuesday. I meant Thursday, the 24th. I'm sorry. It's two weeks from now.
Okay.
21st and...
19th and the 21st.
Yeah, 19th and the 21st. I'm sorry. I put it in for two weeks so that we would be sure we got the word out to people.
So 5:30 to 7:30 at Tony's.
Yeah.
And then the time on the 21st? I know you gave me that paper. I just have not put that in the calendar.
Five o'clock on Tuesday.
It's 5:00 on...
On 30th? Oh, Tuesday?
I'm going to get it. I'm going to get it out. Here it is. Here, I've got it. I will get it right. Tuesday, the 19th, 5:30, 7:30.
5:30?
Thursday, March 21st, 9:00 in the morning... Oh, excuse me. The 21st, it's 9:00 in the morning to 11:00 here.
Oh, not at Ranchers Roost?
No.
But it's going to be at...
It's going to be here.
Commissioner's Room?
Commissioner's Room. It's not at Ranchers Roost. The big meeting's going to be at Tony's because they're expecting, you know, good turnout. That's what we're hoping for.
9:11, huh?
Yeah. And it doesn't look like we're going to need the additional funds unless the guys on that joint meeting want to have another meeting. But it doesn't look like we'll tap into what we've authorized, an additional $1,000 bucks or whatever it was. So that's good. And we'll have a few dollars left over, probably.
For a party.
All right. So all I have for now.
Okay. I also attended the RFP meeting yesterday and then went out to the Saddle Club building. The extension agent program had a meat quality assurance program, lasted a couple hours. I did not stay for all of it, but because I had another board meeting I attended with the Saddle Club and the Fair Board. And just kind of been a monitoring position of moving ahead with their strategic plan and their master plan that they're trying to develop with CU Denver. And so...
Get the water turned on.
Got the water turned on and then turned off again last night. So, and that's all I have done. Attorney Items? Just same thing. I was at the Justice Center meeting yesterday to look at all the proposals that we got. Very interesting from a layman's perspective who has no knowledge of any of this. I did watch the Justice Center in Pueblo. It took 10 years of planning to get to the point where they finally were ready to build it. The sheriff jumped the gun there, didn't want to wait for a detention center, so went ahead and built his own, which is now a hassle because now they're transporting prisoners about a dozen locks or something.
Is that right? Yeah, that is a problem.
Back and forth constantly. And, you know, it's... They have a lot of prisoners that have to come to court just about every... They try to do as much by TV as they can, but it's still a problem for them. I think the one thing, and this is way down the road, but when it comes time to try to convince the taxpayers and the voters in this county that this needs to be done, the one thing that if state judicial, if we don't do this, state judicial could probably take some action to force us to do it. You know, if we don't provide an adequate courtroom facility, they're, you know, they could step in.
And jail.
And the jail. And the jail, that one is just liability. They don't... State judicial doesn't care about our jail. But if, you know, we have prisoners getting sick over there or escaping or anything because the inadequacy of that facility, then we're going to be in a huge lawsuit at some point. So it's... There's certainly some urgency for this. And there's some precedence for that, too. There was a local or relatively close county that was forced to do that by the state. Right. So that's the thing is that if we don't do it voluntarily and it's, you know, no matter how we go about it, it's, you know, the taxpayers are going to have to be footing the bill for something that a lot of them will never use personally. So it's hard to try to make them understand why it's important that we get it done. I was thinking, there's all these plans are already done for the Lake County Center and they couldn't get the funding approved. Maybe we ought to just use theirs. Save all that money for the design phase.
That's a lot of tricks today.
Seriously.
Well, that's not my decision. And incidentally, when you talked about or mentioned that there was a decision made at that meeting yesterday, it wasn't a decision by the commissioners. It was a decision by the...
Committee.
By the committee as to which ones they wanted to go forward and have presentations from. But that's all I did yesterday. Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Administrative Assistant?
She's working on grants?
Oh, I almost said slash grant writer. No, we don't need to be...
Or she could be a grant writer slash administrative.
Making that anymore than it is.
Depends on what hat she's wearing.
So...
Professional.
Professional grant writer.
Let us not forget.
That's right.
What pays the best?
Yeah. Right now, there's not much in it for a grant writer.
Any public comment this morning? Hearing none, we'll move on. Staff reports, unless you had something, sir. And I jumped the gun.
He is the public, too.
I was neglected in the commission reports and bringing up one issue. West Cliff had its town meeting last night and they're concerned about us reopening and discussing the marijuana grower cultivation questions since they've already adopted it. Apparently Silver Cliff had a lot of pushback and they tried to soften it, but they tabled it for the moment, so.
Silver Cliff did.
Silver Cliff did.
Right.
West Cliff has...
Has already adopted it.
And they said to me, are they, the West Cliff, of course, need to amend theirs if we adopt something different? And I told them that...
We need to be consistent, probably.
Well, I told them that, you know, that's what the sheriff is really pushing for so he has one consistent set of laws for the entire county. So it may make sense to do that. And then, of course, in the shower this morning, I figured to myself, you know, we've got some very strong... Because I've done a lot of research on this since the question that came up. There's some really strong laws in the state of Colorado for cultivating, how many plants you could have, where it could be, who could have it. It's got to be locked up. I mean, the laws are pretty... And I'm scratching my head going, I'm not sure really why we're doing this, but, I mean, I'm not saying we should abandon it. I'm just questioning what the purpose of this...
So maybe it means Shannon and the towns get together and we decide what we are trying to do.
Well, I invited Shannon to come to... I have a meeting tomorrow evening with the group that discussed with us. And I invited Shannon to come with it. He has a copy of the outline I did of the suggested changes that the group that was here is requesting. And...
And I understand what West Cliff and Silver Cliff are doing.
Well, and therein lies the issue, the reason I brought it up is because West Cliff has approved and Silver Cliff has not. So West Cliff is amenable to modifying theirs to be consistent if necessary. I also told them, I said, it's already on the books. If you guys want to leave, that's your decision. And I talked to the trustees, of course. It's their decision what they want to do, not mine.
Didn't they get any... Didn't they publish it? Didn't they get any kickback? Didn't they get anybody attending like we did?
Not one word. It was published. It was open meetings. I mean, it was read multiple times. I mean, I don't know. Nobody seemed to mind.
Well, I sure don't want to leap into... Personally, it's my opinion, I don't want to leap into making a decision and have it, you know, not be consistent and be...
Well, there was a little myth that... And it was entirely my fault and I take full blame for this. I had told them when it was presented to them that the county had approved it because we approved the first reading and signed it. I jumped the gun and I told them that, that I said it was approved by the county and in fact it wasn't because we had signed up in the second reading.
So maybe we can have this discussion at our executive roundtable on Friday.
That'd be a good...
I think that would be a wonderful time to discuss.
Perfect. And then come up with a timeframe. We don't have to leap into this, do the right thing. What urgency is this?
It was Cliff said they thought it was probably hastily done and, you know, maybe we should have...
I know it's a reaction to what we've had happening and trying to get things under control that are actual illegal grows and those kinds of... That's how it started in the first place.
Well, I'll give you a preview. One of the things that the group voluntarily said to me is they would like to form a little growers association and register it with the sheriff, pay an annual fee between $50 and $25. They said a nominal fee. And so that the sheriff would know where the grows are so that anybody who's not growing part of this organization, the sheriff then could take a keen eye on that kind of thing. They volunteer that.
That's great.
You know, and I told Shannon yesterday that I didn't feel we could force them to do that, but if they're voluntarily wanted to form an organization, that really may help, you know, with some of the issues.
Well, you know, to me, it's sort of like zoning, isn't it? We could come up with the same kind of thing for growers.
Right.
If they wanted to. But that would be if they're voluntary, then that's even better.
Right. But you know, when I thought about what they want and what the laws of the state Colorado say that we have to abide by, at least that would be the minimum. We can make more stringent, not more lenient.
It's true.
They're pretty strong. I mean, you know, Shannon does his job properly and I'm not... I don't mean to cast any dispirits such Shannon, but I mean, if the sheriff's department does their job diligently, I'm not sure that this ordinance... I personally am not sure I understand what the purpose of this really is.
That's why we ought to look in at heart.
I mean, it limits certain grows and how many acres and how many square feet and that kind of thing, but it's pretty well established.
Didn't he mention, I don't know, this sort of came across like if you had six adults living in one residence instead of a family of two, that, you know, then you end up with 12 plants.
There could be more plants.
See what I'm saying there? You could actually have a facetious commercial grow going and...
And therein lies why... And I brought that up to this group and therein lies why they're interested in registering. They will say, these are the people living in our residence. This is the number of plants we would have.
For the reasons...
And if the changes, we would notify the sheriff's department that there's been a change. So it sounds to me like...
So that would be a cut between commercial and recreational.
You know, they tried to bring that up and I said marijuana is marijuana. I mean, you know, if it makes you happy, is that antidepressant? I don't want to go there.
Disappointing.
My feeling was marijuana is marijuana. It's legal, like it or not. So, you know, there are state laws and I don't know. I'm just throwing that out.
Needs more talk.
Well, and commercial has been out. We have not accepted commercial.
That's right. That's my right one.
Selling it.
Well, really, well...
I meant commercial like medical commercial.
The question was medical versus recreational. And I said, I really don't care what you're saying. You're calling it, it's marijuana.
As far as I'm concerned.
Yep. Anyway, I previewed what we're going to discuss again tomorrow night. This is their original proposal. Some of it sounded fairly reasonable, you know. So anyway...
Which reminds me, I won't be able to be at that joint meeting because I'm going to Action 22. Glad you brought that up.
He's going to Action 22 meeting in Pueblo.
Board of Directors in Pueblo. So I'll miss that.
He's on that board.
Okay. That's fine. What will we have?
I personally...
That's that roundtable with the towns.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll just talk about you when you're not there.
Yeah, I know. Talk about marijuana and how I enjoy dealing. No problem.
One thing I'd like to toss in because the question was raised during the second reading last week when everybody was here and they were expressing their concerns about it. The question was asked several times. You know, I based mine on a Douglas County ordinance and they asked, well, was that ever challenged? The Douglas County ordinance was actually passed back in 2016.
Wow.
And it was challenged. And it didn't report in detail, but the ordinance is still there, so I have to assume the challenge. Yeah. So I just wanted to get that out there. Good.
That's good to know.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll move on. Airport, Stafford Park. Welcome, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
Do you bring any donuts?
No.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. How are you? All right, Joe. Mr. Giacomelli is welcome to join us if you'd like.
He likes the cheap seats.
Bring a chair.
Drag her up, Bob.
I hope so.
For another chair.
You want to talk marijuana in airport? Transportation?
Yeah, you're going to try to be a medical ambulance on marijuana?
Yeah. I got a little email last night from Bob on some of the points he wanted to talk about today.
Jolly.
Yeah. The first one was the fuel cells are so low, 87.6 for February. And I won't say what his thoughts were on why.
You can't read it?
No.
I'll paraphrase. Foul weather.
Very foul.
TFW per weather?
Yeah. So... Thank you for your discussion. And the inventory as of February 28th was 2,764 gallons.
Does that stay there for around this time?
Probably considering the weather and all. As we really get things going out there, the weather will always be a factor and what happens. So... Okay, and it says Armstrong identified a potential safety issue with that camera that was at the end of the runway to do counts, I suppose. That has been removed, so... Which end of the runway? North. Trey took care of that. And the windsock at the segmented circle was, looked more like a flag with this wind we've been having. So that's been repaired.
Speaking of that, I did get... Vernon sent me an email and I meant to push it to you, but the camera's fixed on the end of the website.
Great.
So it's good access. Working. And they gave me a link to hit and I'd hit it, but I couldn't get it to come in at home because I don't have enough bandwidth to do anything.
Because I got a call day before yesterday morning from a man that wanted to know why that camera wasn't working. He was up in Denver. Sounded like he had a charter flight.
That's what it was.
He had to pick somebody up and take them back to Denver, but didn't know. Far runway had been plowed and wanted to know where that camera was, so...
Are we going to replace it?
So we need that fixed and it sounds like it's working now.
Got it fixed.
Good.
Vernon said it was going into a non-existent web or...
Oh, yeah. It was a discussion.
A third party or whatever.
Went to the wrong place. Got changed.
Yeah. So... And a big thing that's come up the last, I'd say the last three weeks is where the fire truck is in that middle bay. The weight of that truck has destroyed that concrete pad there. So we're going to venture in. We need to do something about that soon.
How bad is it? How bad is the sun?
You can definitely see it's embedded and I suppose the next step would be to start crumbling.
And you can still drive over it. You can still drive over it.
You can still drive it back.
But now I'm concerned that the fire truck turns its lights on to fight a fire and tries to pull out and falls.
It's not a sinkhole, but it could turn into a pretty big pothole.
I'm not trying to be facetious. I mean, I'm concerned that maybe we know we're going to have to repair it anyway. Maybe we ought to suggestion, maybe we ought to move forward on that so when we do need it, we don't have an issue.
We'll get Gary to put it on the schedule and see what he thinks.
Yeah. I don't know if they'd wait till warmer weather to work on it.
Well, that's fine. I just don't want them to have to figure out whether Gary should do it.
Well, I was just going to say, I'm not sure.
It may not be him. It would be probably a contractor.
Well, probably the fire department's responsibility.
Well, they'd pay for it, but I'm not going to let them manage it. It's our responsibility. We could ask them to do it for us.
So then would you guys envision doing that whole pad in front of all three doors or just... I wouldn't think so. I think especially if the fire department was on the hook to pay for it, they're going to want to repair it. If it's all according to the same thickness...
They need to fix what they broke.
Would we ever have an issue with those other two?
We do. I don't think it'd be appropriate to ask them to fix areas that their truck does not drive over.
But we could consider if it's prudent to do the other two.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
That may or may not be...
That's a very logical comment, yeah.
And can they put some extra rebar or something in front of that where the truck comes out so it doesn't happen again?
Yeah, you can fix it.
Certainly, in my opinion, it would need to be a thicker slab. Thicker pad.
Thicker slab and some... Should have rebar in it, but...
Well, whatever's there isn't enough, so can they beef it up, you know?
Right.
Put that on your to-do list, huh?
Yeah.
Coordinate with the fire department.
Okay. The last thing he's got, we had that old plow truck, remember, we were using? It was sitting between the two hangers. Trey did get that. We bought a new battery for it and we've got it in one of the bays now, so we'll try to make that usable.
Does it start every once in a while?
Yeah. It's on a charger, but it needs two new hydraulic hoses because they're leaking. So we can't necessarily get it to town. That's what chain up that plow somehow.
What you can do is take the hoses off, take them in the nap and they'll put fitting to them. If that's, you know, they'll make a new hose up.
Yeah. Because that's what it needs, was two new hoses. So...
Got to do it.
And that's all I got, guys. Don't want to talk about anything else.
You're going to get a rough draft and a draft from Meredith and you guys can go over it before we do it Friday.
Okay. She got it ready?
I bet she's close.
Okay. Because she's a professional. Yeah. You say before we do it on Friday, before you refer it. It's got to be turned in.
We need to look at before we push it over to Cindy, I think.
Kristy.
Or Christian, I mean.
Right.
She wants to see it and she's going to just comment on it herself as well. You can... We can get an email and we can make comments.
What are we talking about?
The grant. Rough draft, the grant.
Yeah, so tomorrow I'll send it to y'all.
Yeah.
On the 8th, send it to Kristy.
Yeah. We need to make sure we cover everything. You know, we'll have a good idea. Make her as strong as we can.
So the commissioners are not going to officially...
We're not going to sit down and vote on it?
Vote on it?
No.
Just go in?
You got an idea that improves the quality of the presentation, that's good. Because we're going to get it back. Kristy's going to get it back to us with her comments so that we can clean it up, make it stronger to what she thinks they'll like to see. So that's her plan.
Well, I'll try to open up a process. Did we... Haven't we previously agreed that the three commissioners would approve all grant requests Did we, haven't we previously agreed that the three commissioners would approve all grant, does that go out for the county?
Sure.
So do we have an opportunity to review it?
Yeah, yeah, that's my point.
Okay.
We get it back from her, we're not officially submitting it until we get her informal comments back to us, say.
Been your arm wrestle over?
Well, I don't think we've ever taken any action on the, on the whole grant topic at all.
Yeah, that's a good question on all the grants.
Well, on this one.
Yeah, no, I just, I thought we had agreed that any grant that's gonna have a county name on it, the three of us would review before it was submitted. I mean, I kinda remember that. And of course I could.
So see, so the way I was treating it, it's a rough draft. It's still a rough draft when Christie gets it back to us. And then we decide what we're gonna do with it. That's how I was looking at it.
We as.
The board. And so we're gonna have to figure out how we, we wanna get it submitted by the fifteenth. And Christie's expecting us to email it to her at that point.
After yesterday's meeting in the courtroom and the delay in the mail and those kind of things, I mean, I'm very leery about timing.
Yeah, it is. It's an electronic transfer.
Someone else may not.
And we're gonna make sure she copies back right that she got.
Someone else may not be as lenient as we were yesterday. That's all I'm trying to say.
I agree.
And you're saying the deadline is the fifteenth?
That's what Christie wants it in her hands.
We don't need to.
Pardon? No, we would not be meeting.
I know, that's my point is we gotta figure out how we're gonna handle this.
There was some interesting numbers come up. When we're putting all that together, one of them that I thought was the amount of fuel sold from oh eight to through last year, I think, wasn't it? Had doubled without anybody really pushing the facility out there.
Beginning more people there.
And we push it forward and have this jet fuel and it just really take off.
So let's work a process while we're talking about it. How do we want it?
Well, how about, just a suggestion, our chairman decided how he really would like to handle it, just a suggestion though. How about once we get it back from Christie, Meredith could send it to the three of us. We could send our comments back to Meredith. And I trust Meredith to say, well, there's enough here that we probably oughta call a special meeting. Or, you know, the comments back from us are, you know, just clean up stuff.
Or Christie's comments could be.
Yeah, any, well, that's what I'm saying, our comments back, because we already have Christie's, once we look at it, we're just looking at it, you know. We may, the three of us may just say, looks great, send it on.
We didn't do that with the landfill grant. I guess the point is we.
We probably oughta, we probably oughta.
We gotta be consistent.
Process.
Yeah, I agree with you. That's kinda, we're refining as we go along here.
I agree.
Unless we could vote and say, you guys go do it and we trust you, I mean, that's gonna be a possibility as well.
I'm okay with that too. I mean.
We're all working for the same.
The benefit of everybody, you know, so I couldn't argue with it. I'm not gonna have any more insight than the professionals would have.
Yeah, I suppose.
Thanks for that.
For the legalistic approach, we could put it on the agenda for our special meeting tomorrow at three. We'd still have a twenty-four hour notice. Hope to approve.
Tomorrow at three?
Mm-hmm. For, for hiring a VSO officer.
That's today.
Or today, sorry.
That's today.
Yeah.
That's today. Or, or we, you know.
Looking right there.
Yeah, okay. We, uh.
So maybe, pardon? So maybe a special meeting would be in order. I agree, we've probably been remiss with the landfill grant.
Yeah.
And, and it's okay. I mean, we can, it's our process. And so if we decide we're gonna, on a grant, we can say, all right, we've looked at it, we've all agreed, this is good, it's going in the right direction, we can vote at that time. Clean it up and submit it.
Well, I think if Cheryl Travis here should hand us the little rabbit, because we're all on a rabbit trip.
Yeah.
Because I think the discussion about grant approval is irrespective of.
Of this.
This particular one. This happens to be the catalyst that's getting us talking.
So that's why I'm asking, so what do we wanna do now?
Well, that's right. What do we wanna do on this one? And then we can work out procedure on.
When do you expect to have it back from Cindy Howard?
No, it's Christie doing it.
You got me going.
I did this. She said, she, she said she's busy next week with the committee. And she's gonna take Monday and Tuesday and put some time in it, and then she wants me to talk to her Wednesday and, and we'll get it back probably then. But it could be, it's her time. I could get ahold of her and see if she's got a better handle on her schedule now, and that was a couple of weeks.
I certainly don't wanna jeopardize getting in on the timeframe that she's requesting.
And I really wanna get her input, cause let me explain the process she explained to me. This is not the same as the other grants where it's hearings and everybody gets a vote and blah, blah, blah. It's a, it's their internal staff. That takes all the requests and usually they're in the thirty-four to seventy thousand dollar range, although they go as high as a hundred and fifty or more. And so they, they talk and they look at the goods and they ask Clint what he thinks, he asks you, and they all just barter back and forth. Then I said, well, I don't wanna be stuck if we ask for. She said, how mu, I asked her, how much should we go for? And she said, half. And I told her the amount that we were dealing with, a couple hundred thousand. And she said, ask for half, because you've got a matching grant funds for it. And then, then I said, well, I don't wanna have that be a yes or no, and then we're out of luck. And she said, well, it won't be. That's why she said she wants to keep talking to us. Because I told her we would take a lesser amount and, and they can barter then whether there's a need in Cripple Creek for a fifty thousand dollar study. So that's the process. And so they.
Care down their requirements if we didn't have.
And they're gonna do that over the next couple of weeks. And they wanna, well, maybe a little more than that, because she said, did you ever talk to her, Meredith? When are, when are they gonna grant the money for this?
That, I don't know. I was trying to look that up.
She mentioned June to me, so.
Oh, yeah, uh, June first.
First or middle of June or whatever. I'll clarify that. Anyway, issue then is how, without having another publication, you know, it's our process, so how do we wanna do this particular one now?
Well, if we could buy a couple of days and not submit it until after the twentieth, then we could deal with it on the twentieth at our meeting.
Yeah, what day of the week is the twentieth?
That's a Wednesday. And she has indicated to you she'd like it on Monday.
Well, she wants it the fifteenth, which is Friday.
So that's five days, so she may not wanna.
She may not wanna do that because they're adamant with the other people applying for these things.
We need to live within their deadline. It's their, their game.
Well, let's get it back from her and then we'll maybe select a date for a special meeting.
I agree. We could do that if we decide.
I agree. This is important and we need to do it.
Yeah, I don't think the reasoning that we did not take formal action on the landfill grant gives us leeway to say, well, we don't need to take official action on this one either. Somewhere we're gonna start taking official action. So I would be fine with a special.
We did vote on the landfill grant in Wetmore.
Vote on Wetmore, okay.
But see, then we let it go, take its own process, which is what I, can be our, that can be our process, if we make it so.
The timeline for one was a reason for that.
And I, I'm not sure that would be a good process. I think we need to look at the finished grant.
See, and that's the whole problem here. We're always gonna be up against that wall then, because we'll always submit it and get feedback, you know, I mean, depends on our timing. So we, we either come up with a special case or we call a special meeting every time, that's okay, or we do it.
Excuse me, I have an interruption. Or we'll get these done in a timely manner and we're not in a rush yet. That's what I prefer. That's basically what it wrote in our agreement yesterday, right, Ms. Meredith?
Yes, I'd rather it was submitted.
Well, sure we did. Well, but that, that's my point, though. We knew plenty, but she asked me to get it to her on the eighth. That was her timeline to us. And we started this a month ago. We started discussing it and we started working with Christie. And so she can drive, see, my point is even the recipient can drive our need for a special meeting, if that's what we wanna do.
Right, but we're more diligent and work within a reasonable timeframe. We should not ever be in a, gotta do it right this second. I, I mean, that, that was, this thing we approved yesterday, that was in there three or four times, that we're not gonna be prescient to a last minute deal. I mean, it's just, it's inappropriate for everybody. Whoever the organization do a sloppy job, we won't review it as well as we should.
Right, right.
Quickly be slapped out and it, I mean, it just doesn't do anybody the right, it doesn't serve anybody properly.
Well, and in this case, I mean, we don't need to harp on it, but. I mean, we didn't even start this grant process for the.
Well, we had.
Airport till last week, correct? What day was that?
Yeah.
Cause we went to the airport, that didn't happen, and then it was.
I'll get the rabbit out of there in a minute, but I'm gonna point out one more time. Meredith came on in the middle of this and Brenda was started with it. And we started to go down that process. I asked Brenda to get us the stuff for these guys to understand it. And we started dealing with it six weeks ago. And so we got caught up in the middle of a couple of things. So that happens. But I agree, your point is correct. Do it in time.
Okay, but this one is an anomaly. We're gonna, we're not gonna let this grant go away by not meeting to discuss it.
Right.
So if we have to change the procedure now that we're establishing for the future, let's get it done. That's my feeling.
I agree. Okay, so what are we gonna do? We're gonna have a special meeting when we get it back from Christie.
You say Cindy, I'm.
I didn't say Cindy, cause Cindy's sitting here. I can see Cindy.
Yeah.
Christie. It's gonna be Christie, Sissy.
And then, and then when Ms. Howard does come to the table, we'll start calling her Christie.
We'll call her Christie Dune.
I think we have a plan.
Cindy Dune.
Again, Meredith, thanks so much for what you did to come to us quickly as you did.
I think she did very well.
She not done yet.
Okay, so before I leave.
Yes, sir.
Next month this time, are, are meetings out there?
April, yes.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, where?
Seventeenth.
We're having a DLCC meeting at the airport.
You voted on it, sir.
Yeah.
And you were, you wanted to be.
Actually, you might have made the motion come to me.
I thought you promised to wake me up before I vote.
Therefore you will bring the apple fritters. You're gonna bring the apple fritters.
I'll pick you up if you would like.
I am delighted to go to the airport. I love the airport. I'm just.
We modified our schedule.
Well, I just wanted to make sure I had the right.
Yeah, April seventeenth, nine o'clock.
April what?
It's the mid-month.
Mid-month, seventeenth. Yeah. You were thinking it was some other day?
We're saying it was the first block.
Oh, yeah, no, it's mid-month.
Well, he's. You're gonna jump the gun. Now, this is just a special meeting, so you don't have to do your reports.
Well, we just wanna make sure we're prepped and have the coffee on and have some.
Fix the pothole in the driveway.
Maybe have law enforcement in case we have to escort somebody out of the meeting.
It's gonna be that rough.
That's why we're having it out there.
There were all those illegal grocers going on.
We, the commissioner spoke to Roden Bridge Supervisor about taking sheriff's vehicles that were decommissioning down to the county shop. And have the decals and the light bars and cages, whatever else needs to be taken out of them. They, Gary agreed to do that. Said we'd like to get it done in somewhat of a timely manner, primarily before spring rush hits the county shop. So soon as Sheriff Byerley gets his radios out, then we'll make arrangements to get him down to the county shop.
Fantastic.
And after that's done, then I would guess we may ask you to get him from the county shop.
Yeah, sure, that's a problem. I did wanna say thank you to you guys for that. And we will certainly have our rules in place and our insurance in place before we give anybody a key to go anywhere with it, so.
Yeah, we probably oughta talk about that process now. The commissioners have not voted to authorize courtesy cars at the airport. No, that has not happened. So for the record, the commissioners agreed to send these vehicles down there.
Okay.
Versus letting them sit somewhere else and somebody wanting to lay claim to them. But I did not, I did not vote to authorize the courtesy cars.
We wanna make sure they're, it's a whole process. That's what's going on now.
Put that on the Wetmore meeting, the next meeting, so that we can discuss it, vote on it.
Sure.
And then you'll be ready to go once you get equipped and all that kinda stuff, so would that make sense?
Yeah.
Not to me, it doesn't. And I will explain why.
Go ahead.
Uh, I think the airport has a lot of hoops to jump through. Before, I would be comfortable in voting to authorize them to have courtesy cars.
Cause of the, okay.
And I'm not sure that can happen by the Wetmore meeting. It might, but, I mean, you have to have every question answered, every.
So you want the rules and the insurance in place before the actual.
How you're gonna handle maintenance of these vehicles, who's gonna pay for that? Is there gonna be a fee for people to use the courtesy car? I mean, I'm not establishing a rules plan, I'm just suggesting the kinda.
Yeah, it has to.
I would like to see.
And I'm not saying you'd actually have to have the policy in place, pardon me for interrupting you there. But at least to say, this is, we've talked to our insurance company, here's exactly how much it's gonna cost us, and, and this is what it's gonna cover, that kinda thing. I don't expect you to already have signed off on all that before we vote, because that'd be crazy to do all that, pay a premium, and we vote not to give, you know, not to allow the process. But at least have all that information in front of us so we can say, okay, so now we understand.
Kinda handy.
Exactly what that courtesy car program's gonna look like. That's my opinion.
That's what I thought we were doing.
What kinds of things, insurance, maintenance, what other kinds of things would you like to see?
Expenses, fuel.
Geographical limits.
Your, your rule, your plan, the goal, and how you're gonna implement it.
Process of checking out a car and returning it.
Okay.
Where they're gonna be housed, where the keys are gonna be housed, how does somebody fly in and get a key? What's the form look like that they're gonna sign and waiver, whatever that looks like. I think that needs to be a packet to come before the commissioners. Before I would vote to move forward with this.
Maybe you could put that on the April meeting at the airport.
And again, I might have misspoken. If you believe you can have that by the Wetmore meeting in.
I don't think there's any rush.
Fourteen days.
Probably not.
But, and that might be appropriate to have it at our April meeting down at the airport, but that's.
You'll be fine with it.
It'd be entirely up to you guys.
I'm just thinking we're getting into the time of year where.
Gonna need inspiration of flyers.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So I'd like to do it sooner than later, but I don't like, just like the grants, I don't wanna rush it through just to get it done.
But like I said, I, I wanted you guys to know that we weren't gonna get him down there and, and keys out. We'll have all this stuff done.
So maybe I misunderstood what you said.
But, but you want it before you vote, so.
Right.
That steps it up a little bit, so.
And I believe that's reasonable. If you don't, let's have that conversation. But, you know, to ask us to vote, to do, to move forward with the courtesy cars and not know all that stuff, I think would be irresponsible for the bus.
Right. And, you know, just the big picture, you're gonna deal with the towns, you got a plan to get them, maybe even working with you on how you're gonna advertise things. Just a big picture, what you're gonna do.
Well, I think the first detail we might wanna put on it is, is Silver West Airport.
Sure.
Courtesy car, so as it runs around town.
Right. By the way, Jackie pointed out to me yesterday, you have the signs already, but that parking lot, all you need is to state, put the post up. This is Silver West Airport, it's where the parking lot is.
Yeah.
Where all the cars are right now. So, and then you decide where you're gonna, you know, how you're gonna handle the fence. Is it gonna go around that? Is it gonna be where it is now? And all that stuff, it's yours to manage.
But it was, it's county property, man. It's not airport.
No, she says that's airport property. It's county, that's what the county, the county, the airport is county property. That's how she put it.
County owns the land, but it's obviously.
So what you wanna manage, how much of that is, is in your boundaries is up to you, she said. You put a sign up there and you say, Silver West Airport, turn in here and go through the gate. Do not park here where they're parking now, or you can have that be the parking lot and fence it in, she said. That's the, the point. Cause what else is the county gonna do with?
Well, I know, but I mean, I, I thought part of the whole issue that came up was because Shannon had that.
But that's the point. It's under your control if you put the sign up, she says, and then you, if you put the sign up, then you better make sure everybody's got them registered, cause Shannon will pull them out. See? If they, if you wanna have a guy in a hangar that has a car that's expired and it keeps it in the hangar, then so what?
So be it, yeah. But out there on the road is.
On the road is a different story.
I mean, my perspective is the county owns the land, but you guys manage that property.
It's not deeded to the airport, it's county property, and you guys manage the property, the airport.
Well, then where would that boundary stop?
Where you put it.
I mean, they're saying we manage county property, but that could go.
Well, that's right, but right now it's the airport boundary as described by the fence that goes around it. And in this case, that fence doesn't include that little piece, but it can, or it cannot. It can just be a sign, she said. It's still, you're not allowed to park there. And, and, or you can say parking here and have it not fenced.
Right.
It's okay.
All right, so.
Yeah, I would think that, and you're, that's a great question, is where does that managerial boundary lie?
We, we thought we stopped at airport property.
Right.
Yeah, and that was your responsibility, because you own.
Well, now we're saying, but there's.
So everything fenced out there that we would consider the airport, in my opinion, would be under the management of your board.
Right.
If that management plan came up, let's say you wanna drill a new commercial well, all right? As a commissioner, I'd say if you've got the money in your budget to do it, then that's a managerial thing. If you don't, then I would expect you to be back in front of the commissioners saying, we need twenty-five grand to drill a well. That kinda thing. I think those can kinda sort themselves out.
This whole conversation started with what's outside of the fence.
Yeah, but, but that's the point.
Yes.
Okay, we'll put a sign up, that's all.
Put the sign up.
All right, forget about it. Move on.
And fence it if you want to.
I'm assuming it's outside of the fence, because the public would, had to have, be able to pull in, or public being the pilots or whoever, right, wanted to drive down the road.
I assumed it was outside the fence, because it was not ever designated airport property.
No, I don't agree with that.
No, I don't either. And what a reason it wasn't, Glenn, is because that's what the fence they paid for and that's the fencing they put up. That is the airport ground if we want it to be. Do you want it or not? If you don't, if you say no, then fine, the people, it's gonna be a county, it's still county property.
Well, we'll put a sign up.
Yeah, I think it'd be a board discussion for you guys.
Yeah, you guys decide if you wanna do it.
From my perspective, they just didn't put a fence across there, right, so people could drive in. That would be my perspective.
Or walk in.
My perspective was it's not designated airport property, so the fence didn't go there.
Right. See, and it doesn't, the fence go all the way and then cut back in around the parking lot and then keep going, right? The parking lot is the only thing that really isn't fenced.
Right.
Yes.
It's your parking lot, far as we're concerned.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
I'm gonna ask the question, why does it really matter?
Yeah.
Well, it's all county property. I recognize, there's no, there's no debate inside the fence, we're gonna let you manage it. We have vehicles, people park outside the fence. I know that. We had an issue with a squatter.
Right.
The sheriff took care of that, or the planning zoning took care of it. It's gone. If that problem comes up again and the airport notices it, you're gonna notify us somewhere, someone, your planning zoning sheriff, somebody. And we'll solve it. I'm not sure I recognize why this is.
Yeah, it shouldn't be an issue, cause, cause you, to me, Glenn, you wouldn't wanna have just any Joe drive in there and park there and go off and hike somewhere. And you'd like to control the traffic within the airport, I would think. And to have it registered, know who's there.
I guess I have a mental block as to.
Yeah.
Do you? Airport property, I feel, is our, our responsibility. Outside of that fence is.
Okay, and if you see a squatter or another issue like we had before, you call somebody and say, hey, sheriff.
You don't want it in the side fence, you move the fence.
See, and it makes sense to me that that would be part of the airport property if that's where pilots are gonna park. Or the public to come down there and fly or go on a ride or whatever.
It's, it's not that.
Whether or not it's literally fenced, doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter if it's fenced.
But to me, it would still be.
It's your, you, you can manage it.
What would a medic would sign?
Wrap it up.
Jason, move on.
I'm buying a bunny.
What would the sign have to say?
Get a bunny.
Well, we've already got the sign.
Silver West Airport, park here if you're whatever.
Yeah, okay.
Good, thank you. Sorry.
You're not, I just. This too shall pass.
It's okay.
With a mental block, I guess.
Doesn't have to happen during the airport staff. Doesn't have to happen during the airport staff meeting, but we got to have these conversations and make decisions during these meetings. Unfortunately, it happened during the airport staff report.
I gotta tell you guys, it is a pleasure to see a board that is functional and works. You guys are fun to watch work with each other and you're getting stuff done. From the old days that I'm familiar with, this is a dream. Keep going, you guys.
Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks for that comment.
Guys, stick around, watch us handle Cindy, you might have a different opinion.
For numerous reasons, I'd like to introduce Cindy Howard.
Thank you.
It's not Cindy Dune.
Who hasn't introduced us as the new Christie. Christie Coleman gets called Cindy a lot and then there's Christie, Christie Dune, if you wanna make it more.
She is actually regularly scheduled to have a staff report. Don't ask me why I went on that.
I started to watch the meeting to see that blur, but I missed it.
Emailed Cindy yesterday and apologized for my total brain freeze and outside out of mind. And I just saw you last week, cause we did a little tour, but, um, we were trying to think, and I didn't go back and look at the minutes, but I don't think you were at the staff report.
I think I was, I was thinking I was in, yeah, I was here last month, January, there wasn't one. December, I think I made the staff report, but I missed the CES meeting when my dad died, so.
Yeah.
Cause that kinda messed up the second half of my December. But yeah, and then I missed you in January, but that's your fault, not mine.
So my apologies.
No worries, I don't know what was, what I missed, but yeah, my ears weren't burning, it's good.
Good, good. Okay, let's get.
I did, uh, send my report in a couple times to Meredith and I think I finally got it fixed, but I was using her old email address that didn't get updated, so.
Right.
That was a little late to you, which probably added to the confusion. And I could've done the same thing with last month's report, for all I know.
Okay, good. And we had just a brief conversation, you were thinking about resubmitting for a coroner's vehicle.
I can do that under the, yeah, the Homeland Security grant. I was in the FEMA website looking at equipment. Kit and Beth had both been asking questions too. So the process I've usually followed with Homeland Security, cause it's really, it's the 2019 grant, but we wouldn't be spending anything we get till 20. So usually, we put in for projects and then whatever sticks, we come back with a county grant form and put it in the budget request for 2020. If it was something that, you know, say Shannon, if somebody was getting, or the coroner's vehicle, if we could fast track it, it doesn't matter to me what year it's spent in, but I think from Donna's perspective, it's easier to address it as a 2020 budget issue if it's approved. We normally don't get approval to spend any of that till like November anyway, and it's so close to the new year. So I can put in for that one.
Well, what if the commissioners came up with the money to get him a vehicle, let's say in October, and then we find out we get that grant later, then can we reimburse the county for the expense of that vehicle? It's gotta be a direct expense.
Yeah, you can't spend it before you get approval. And that's what we've been holding off on the sheriff's office fence for, because we needed both state approval and federal approval.
Is that a DOLA grant, what kind of?
Now it's Homeland Security. So it's a pass through from FEMA to the state, down to the South Region, and then the South Region is our fiscal agent. So we have to follow our purchasing policies or Pueblo County purchasing policies, whichever are stricter of the two.
Yeah.
Um, which usually means Pueblo County. But yes, if we knew you had some money and this thing got approved and Larissa said you can go ahead and spend it in November or whatever, then, you know, we could do it. It doesn't matter to me if we pushed it into the next year's budget, cause you, you'd be the ones amending the budget. So I did put in for the coroner's vehicle last year and I got a lot of pushback. It looks like if I call it a church truck that will hold a coffin, um, cause really FEMA has mass casualty vehicles and so, you know, we said, well, we don't even have a sole casualty vehicle in Custer County. Um, but Fremont County, a year ago, two years ago, they got a big refrigerated truck for a mass casualty vehicle. It's a South Region asset, um, and like we've got the light tower one year and so that's deployable. So it meets the deployable, I think it would meet, um, the, uh, the FEMA equipment guideline as a church truck and, um, the, the concern at the South Region last year was we're setting a precedent. Now every coroner is gonna want a new vehicle. We've sort of already set that precedent, cause every emergency manager wants a new vehicle and Fremont's getting a new vehicle this year. Um, Pueblo County got a vehicle for the dive team and if you don't consider that a recovery vehicle, I don't think they've saved anyone out of Pueblo Reservoir lately.
Well, how do coroners get vehicles normally?
I think county can.
Buys it period, out of general fund and kinda stuff?
And Art had a nice quote, it was based off of the Fremont County coroner's, um, vehicle.
They could just buy a regular vehicle, they don't have to buy a hearse or anything like that? I mean, I just don't know.
I haven't looked into any specific specs yet on what a church truck is.
I'm surprised they're even entertaining it.
It just, I, it, you know, like, uh, even Randy Keller's, the funeral home, when he comes up, he's got a minivan, you know, because they don't use hearse's anymore. So, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure it wouldn't be more than, you know, a four-wheel drive, something where it's not the backwood pickup. There, there's some other ideas, so I sent out an email and we've been brainstorming, um, and not that we wanna get into the sheltering business, but the large animal and small animal toys are one option. Um, Kit asked if they could do a water tender and I found foam trucks, but it doesn't really meet, you know, if you're looking at probably not spending it till 2020 anyway, it doesn't mean a fast turnaround for fire. Does cover PPE, so if we decided we wanted, you know, fire, um, wildland fire gear on, in all our road and bridge trucks and stuff.
Personal protection.
Yeah.
Personal protection.
Yeah. So, um, you know, if the deputies and the road and bridge and folks wanted to start getting, um, you know, the fire rated shirts and pants and gloves and, you know, wildland gear, fire shelter. I, I know the Sea Duck guys carry PPE with them and they carry Abby gear and a bunch of other stuff, so it would cover some of those kinds of things. The deadline for this is March 28th at midnight, um, so, you know, I, it'll be that week, we'll get it submitted. And, uh, then we go to the South Region and.
So who's writing that grant?
It's a one-page form. I've sent it out, you have to get your quotes, and I've sent it out to everybody. Vernon was looking at satellite phones and, you know, they potentially buy the phone, but they wouldn't pay the program, you know, the, the monthly service fee or anything after the first year. So I, everybody's got the form and tip, in a typical year, they'll all send me back their forms and we'll kinda flush it out beforehand. And then the, it, it'll go to the South Region, um, and we'll all do grant scoring matrices and we'll get one vote per county, score them, and we don't recuse ourselves as a county. Everybody scores the project. So Pueblo County last year got bomb suits, I think they got, and, you know, there's not a lot of money. We're talking about between five counties, we're maybe splitting a hundred and sixty grand between us. But if we don't fight for it, Pueblo County gets the bulk of it and beyond them, Fremont County's always done really well.
So this is a multi-representative grant. All these entities can put in their input request to be included in the grant.
Anybody in the county that would meet, um, so I sent it out to, I copied Gwen, just because of the animal stuff. Um, I sent it to, to Beth, to Alyssa, to Kit, to Ruth Roper for Wetmore Fire, and then to like our MRC and Posse folks and, and certain. So typically, I wanna copy to Art, but I already know what Art wants, so.
Ambulance is not part of that.
Yeah, well, Beth looked, Beth looked hard at it yesterday. It really is more of your PPE, cots and, um, decontamination kind of.
So that's not this grant that you've got here, is it?
Uh, well, so it's, the, yeah, so the, um, Homeland, Homeland Security one, it's, that's the first one.
So that's the one you're.
It's not in yet. So the 2018, we're ready to move forward.
This, this is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the 2019 is the one I've got that we're talking about, yeah. And then the 2018, we got the security fence and we got through the FEMA approval, the federal approval on the first pass. So we're good on that security fence for the sheriff's office. I had to battle that one because it wasn't mobile and deployable, but, but it was a security need. I mean, we, there were a lot of issues there.
Now, can I back up a little on the Homeland Grant? If regional, is that?
It's part of the South Region, Pueblo, Fremont.
And so our assets would have to be deployable within that region or no?
They can be, so we have that light tower and last year I got on the phone at the spring fire and asked John Decker to get the light tower down to La Vida.
So is there a limit on the amount? It doesn't, you don't say it here, you can ask for the sky and get it?
Yeah, uh, you could ask for the sky and not get it.
Right.
That, last year, the grant was right around the two-hundred mark and Larissa's salary takes up a big chunk of that, which is mandated into the grant. And so, uh, we'll probably be splitting about a hundred and sixty thousand between five counties. So it's not a big chunk of change. But projects like generators, light towers, PPE, something the region doesn't have yet, if we decided to go get some stainless steel dog and cat cages and, and start developing something.
So coroner's vehicle is fifty K or something, let's say.
I, I'd have to look at the bid, it's, I think it was about forty thousand, the one that he wanted.
So if, if you're trying to compete with other counties and yourself, if you're gonna ask for a bunch of PPE and everything else, you need to narrow it down, don't you? What are you doing?
So, yeah, we need to come up with ideas and, um, and then when we take them to the South Region, we might, might wanna narrow them down all ourselves, but we also don't want to throw out every other idea and just go for a coroner's vehicle and then they say, no way, we're not supporting that one.
Right, then you're.
And then we have nothing.
So now you're kinda up against a wall, cause you got twenty-eighth is coming up pretty quick.
Well, we've been talking about it at the CES meetings for months. And this is just, this form doesn't go to FEMA, it's a one-page form that goes to Larissa.
I see.
Our next CES meeting is in West Cliff on March 14th, so we'll be talking about it here. Um, the fact that it's in West Cliff and Larissa's here, she's the grants coordinator. I can let, you know, Kit and Shannon and Beth and anybody who thinks they might have a project, come talk to Larissa and see. We did run in with Posse, um, you can't order law enforcement equipment, so, um, some of the things, Posse still has some money on their, on the 2017 grant. They haven't spent, because they don't know how to spend it every time they go to Larissa. Um, she's like, you can't, you can't buy that. But what they did was, um, two commanders ago, they said, we have a very specific list of equipment we wanna buy. It was, it was approved and then.
So you said that meeting's on the fourteenth, Cindy?
Yeah, is that Thursday, the fourteenth? Yes.
We'll be gone.
We'll be gone.
It's here in the Star Building, yeah.
Four thirty?
I think it starts at one, one to four.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll be in a meeting up in Salida, Upper Arkansas.
Okay, well, I can still get, um, you know, somebody from the fire station and I'm sure Chris will be there, cause Chris is my alternate regent, Chris Barr, um, on the South Region, so that he can come in and help me fight for this grant money. So anyway, yeah, that, it's not a big grant, it's not a hard issue, it's just trying to fight for our share and, uh, hopefully.
Would it be reasonable ever to consider submitting in that grant? I don't know the actual name of these, uh, portable electronic highway signs.
Variable messaging.
Thank you.
Yes.
Who knew?
Yeah.
You know, I just, last year, we made it definitely.
I had some quotes, I had some quotes, because we put those in for, um, the recovery stuff. We asked the state as part of Junkins Fire Recovery to get us some. No, I think variable messaging.
You know, it's a good idea, just for the county to have one, cause we always have a road problem somewhere.
VM, VMS, variable message signs, yeah, that's a good idea.
Thank you.
I'll check the FEMA guidance.
Who knew?
Would you tolerate a question that's probably borders on being an ignorant question? But I just don't know the answer, so I'm gonna ask.
Boy, I wish I had come back for that one. I'm just not quick.
Well, does he have any other crime?
And it's about fire reimbursement.
Uh huh.
Were we eligible for reimbursed funds from the last?
The Junkins Fire?
No, the one prior to, or after that, small fire out here.
The Adobe Fire? The Adobe Fire? The county was not.
Okay.
Uh, Wet Mountain Fire Protection District would've been. Um, I remember on July 4th, talking to some of the firemen that told me I better start tracking costs for reimbursement and I reminded them I worked for the county, not for Wet Mountain Fire Protection District. And so Terry Munson picked up that and she submitted.
And do you know if they got reimbursed or?
I don't know.
Okay, so now let's go back.
They did, they got reimbursed, okay.
Go back up the calendar then, and obviously the Junkins Fire.
The Junkins Fire, the only thing that, uh, Joe Lobiondo said that we might have been eligible for reimbursement on would've been the county road and bridge tenders. Um, I don't know if county road and bridge ever submitted anything and we've had about three changes in staffing over there. Roger said at the CES meeting, he thought that they were reimbursed. But we also had an issue at which Meredith helped clean up with the SURF equipment. The Wet Mountain Fire Protection District had listed all of the county equipment under their SURF agreement, so it's also possible that Wet Mountain Fire Protection District could've been reimbursed for, for, uh, county equipment during the Junkins Fire. I don't see any of that, um, and in other counties, it's the finance staff that does all this. Um, in Custer County, you know, I do my portion, um, road and bridge, fire. So we did talk about at the last CES meeting, trying to make our required resource mobilization drill, be half resource mob drill and then half with all the finance people, so that, you know, Ruth and Terry and whoever's gonna be working that, find that out. And Joe Lobiondo said it would be too late for, you know, me to really go through the FPC to see if they got reimbursed. But I don't know, cause that would've been Danny there at the time. And I just assumed, you know, they were doing it all. I knew Joe came day one of the fire, Joe signed SURF agreements, handwritten SURF agreements, and I think that's how we ended up with two sets. There were no SURF agreements, so Joe rode them with road and bridge. And then later we found out that they were all submitted under Wet Mountain Fire and then we had a conflict that they were in both. So they're going to a new online system. We keep hearing it's gonna roll out in April, it's been postponed a couple times. But all the SURF agreements are now gonna require VIN numbers and there won't be any possibility of duplication. But then if you reseat like a water tender or an ambulance, you have to go through a process of changing the VIN number. And the old forms were good for three years, they'll now, now be one year at a time. But I didn't even come up with on the county side of time in on the equation. I came up with somewhere around thirty thousand dollars, um, and that was shelterings and volunteer hours at twenty-five dollars an hour and, and we only spent, um, like maybe a couple thousand dollars out of pocket besides the personnel. Um, so I didn't have enough to reimburse to, to go after, because if I did go after that money, it would've been possible that they would've come back and said, you know, you have a cost share here and actually you paid so very little on this fire, maybe your cost share should be more. So I was also concerned they'd come back and say, you know, you guys owe a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, you know, and part of what happened with the Junkins Fire that was unusual was they, you know, it started in the middle of the night, we got on scene, we did a delegation of authority by like noon, but they backed it up to six AM. So the feds started picking up almost all those costs from six AM on. So that probably saved us there, cause I think that fire ended up being about fourteen and a half million dollars. Um, I know it jumped the, you know, made a higher number. And what they're saying they're gonna do in the future is sit down with the policy group and start having these cost share discussions earlier, so I hope that doesn't happen, but we'll see.
Well, I guess my question to you would be, in your opinion, our process, particularly from the county's perspective, is it clean, clear and concise of how this all is going to work?
Nope.
I didn't feel it was either.
It's not.
Do you think we need to get all the players together and say, this is who's gonna be responsible for submitting requests?
It should probably be tied to the logistics section and be in the emergency operations plan. The problem is it's not even clear, concise at the state level or at the federal level and so much varies. But I do think, yeah, I, I think, I don't have a position of authority where I can go to Sherry at Road and Bridge and say, you have to do this. I can say, you know, let's work together, this is what needs to be done.
Right.
And it needs to sort of be finance driven. We also have the issue, you know, as we get into, um, you know, comp time, overtime, all that, um, bonuses. Um, so overtime on the county would be a reimbursable expense. Anybody that's taking comp time, that's the county's donation, so, you know, you work the fire in October, you take three weeks off in May, you can't reimburse comp time. And what they did in the spring fire was Orphanoe County gave all the employees who worked all that overtime, they gave them bonuses. And those bonuses aren't gonna be reimbursable either. So you, you had no comp time, you were an exempt employee, you gotta...
So what are you thinking, Tom?
Well, I think we need to have a big workshop, big round table, sit everybody down and say, okay, I'll use Public Health since she's here for an example. We go through an event and so I think it needs to be articulated, okay, Public Health. Here's the question. Are you going to be responsible for your own financial reporting? Or do you expect the county to do that? And, and if so, then who in the county's gonna do that? Does it fall on emergency manager? Does it fall on our finance person? Who's gonna do that, see?
Yeah.
So I just think that conversation needs to be had with every entity at the table. I get...
Yeah, it's clear as mud right now.
Yeah, I'll be the first to admit, man. My head starts swimming in those CES meetings.
Yeah.
Cuz I can't keep it all sorted out. I can barely follow the gist of the agenda, not that there's anything wrong with it. I just struggle trying to sort out who is what player in what arena, so. It's, it's been a source of frustration for me from day one that, and you and I've had this conversation. We keep talking about things we need to do. And I haven't seen us sit down and get together and do any of those, really, as a big group. Radios being a good example. Did everybody buy in that these are exactly the radios we're gonna buy countywide or not? And if not, why not? Okay, there might be legitimate reasons. But I just think we need to, to have that round table where everybody states their case and then decisions are made.
And, and I've asked a few times, you know, for some input on changing the agenda. I mean, cuz it's really, you know, if we wanna make it project specific, you know, it's about getting people to the trail, to the table and communicating too and meeting our training plans. If we come and we just work on projects, you know, we're, we're gonna miss it.
So what is it, Cindy? Who's the lead dog on the...
On finance?
No, the whole process. We just, guys volunteered to get together and they sit around the table and they decide.
So the Custer Emergency Services, I wouldn't even call it a board. Custer Emergency Services is supposed to be a liaison to share information. It's a multi-agency coordination meeting. So that the agencies are working together. They're not just out going down, doing their own things and nobody else knows about it or, or they get blindsided. So that's sort of the reporting format. The LEPC aspect of it is the Local Emergency Preparedness Council. We tried to double ours, so we don't have two separate meetings, but that's the hazmat stuff. We have to sit down as agencies and talk together and occasionally touch on hazmat incidents and hazmat aspects, which is pretty hard on the pushback here. Everybody has their own grant deliverables. I think the ones that are hit hardest are Public Health, the clinic, EMS, and Emergency Management for actually having to do these various different trainings and... So a lot of that, you know, so I'm the chair.
Of the joint organization or just of CES?
Of the CES, LEPC.
And everything you're showing us here, these grants are under your purview, not the joint group. Is that right?
The Homeland Security Grants that you're seeing here are South Region Emergency Management Grants.
And who's managing that? You?
The grant or the...
Yeah, the process or work, cuz this is just our input to those.
I'm just reporting to you where we're spending money here. This is just an ongoing report. These are three open grants, or they will be. I just closed 2016. 2019's about to open. The South Region is the five counties.
So you're, you're speaking as a five county person when you're presenting these to them?
Right, so there's two five county committees, you know. This is government. Can we be efficient?
Absolutely.
We, so we have the South Region Homeland Security Council, or whatever its name is, which Larissa Orndolph.
Okay, I don't care about that.
Okay, she shares it. We have the South Region Emergency Management, which Christie Coleman from the state chairs, because they give us money, so that's when she gets, tell us what we have to do for that money.
Homeland Security, the RSG grant, who's in?
The Ready Set Go grant is mine.
Oh, that's a Custer County...
That's a Custer County grant. It's not tied to Homeland Security at all. It's through the International Association of Fire Chiefs. It's federal money.
Okay.
And the Public Health wasn't tied to it at all, the, the one that we closed out in Greenwood.
So Tom brings up a good point. We need, we kinda wanna get a big picture view of who's doing what to who and are we buying similar stuff or whatever that we wanna help sponsor. I mean, from county point of view, I just wanna know what you want from us.
I'm not asking for anything from you. It, it started out here that finance was clear as mud. And then we went to the CES meetings in the format and then we jumped over to the grants. So we're talking three things here. I'm not sure.
Let's keep her focused.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not asking for anything.
To ask your input and your opinion about, do we need to get that done?
We need...
If we do, then I think it's incumbent on commissioners to make that happen.
I think, and yeah, that's, I, I agree that we need at the county level, it would be nice to include fire, so they know what they're doing, and EMS. But we need to work on the finance reimbursement piece and do the best job we can. Meredith and I worked a lot on it. We went back through the Duckett Fire and the Office of Emergency Management signed some reimbursement forms and money came in on the Duckett Fire. And when I was looking at that to see how that process was done, you know, Christie Coleman was signing under penalty of perjury and I told Meredith, I won't do that. I may submit the forms, but you know, it'll be...
So where are we going with this then?
It'll be other people. We need, you wanna, we can put it on the CES agenda and...
I'd like to put that on the agenda, not to do it during a CES meeting.
Yeah, tie it to that workshop.
To have the conversation there, right. And then say...
Have a conversation and then go to the...
Right.
And we have to do the workshop for Resource Move. So we talked about doing Resource Move workshop like maybe in the morning, followed by the finance part. So, so what I, my ask from that would be is that you guys back me up and get people to the table from the county.
Right.
That they actually attend, cuz I can't, you know.
And hey, we can't be telling them either, but we can certainly say, this is what we're trying to do. If you want a seat at that table and be part of that conversation, we'd like to have you there.
But at the end of the day, you sign their paychecks. And so if the end, the final decision is gonna be that, you know, that Paula's doing it for the Sheriff's Department and, and Sherry's doing it for Road and Bridge and I'm doing it for, you know, OEM and Alyssa Scott Staff that's covering MRC and...
Terry's doing the fire, whatever. That just, to me, that needs to be defined.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter what the names are to me.
Probably some sort of an art chart and a plan and...
But I just think we need to get that firm enough.
And I got the draft finance plan done in Q4, but I told Christie, it's, you know, it still needs work. I sent her a draft of the grant deliverable, but it, it's still a work in progress. It's, it's, there's a lot to it. And because there's so many different pots of money and different rules, depending on which pot of money you're in. So we'll throw that on the agenda for... It'll be the April meeting, because we're doing that training at the March meeting.
Then we're fine, cuz we're gonna be, we're committed in March here.
Okay, so I got a couple of questions on the RSG grant, the Ready Set Go grant, just for information. So how, how is that handled? I see that KC Wood Products out of Fluorescent got the contract. Who granted that? Who made the selection? How was that process made?
So we did, we did two site tours. I was working with Arc Collaborative. We had a really bad snow day the first day, so we did a second site tour, extended the RFP. We had 10 contractors come. We had six submit bids. And KC Wood Products was low bid at 1,300 an acre. And the, the next two, that bid included the vendor you're talking about and they were $300 an acre higher. So then Arc Collaborative presented all three bids to Jen Dietz at the International Association of Fire Chiefs. And Jen had the final say. So Arc recommended KC Wood Products and IAFC approved it.
So I'm trying to get a handle on who the authority is. Is it...
The authority is the grantor, the International Association...
We applied for a grant. We got the grant and we spend the money. I'm wondering who's managing that for the county. Was it you?
Me and these three notebooks?
That's what I, okay. And then, and then we had contractors bid countywide and in other places. I don't care about it. I'm just looking at the process.
Okay.
Okay, and then, and then I see here also that Claudia Morris, who keeps complaining about it, thinks it's her road. So what happened there and what's going on?
We're not working on Claudia's road. We're working above it.
It's not Claudia's road, isn't it? The county road?
No, I know. Sorry. We're not working on Bunker Hill Road at all. We're mostly working on Sugar Lots.
So what, she complained?
Because we needed access to the bottom of the lots and the vendor drove down to see, that's how you get in, to the bottom of Chris Forks. She drove, he drove the road. She came out and...
Just recently? Yeah, this is, I...
A week ago Monday.
I got the same complaint. I'm just wondering if this is what this is referring to? That, that's the issue?
Yeah, oh yeah. Yeah, that issue's been dealt with. We documented it. She sent a couple emails. Tom and I went out and had a visit with her. Buck told me to wear my body camera next time I go out.
Yeah, and I got a separate call unbeknownst to the, you guys were out there already. So I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering how this was...
And your call was pertaining to...
Same thing. Chris Work called me and said Claudia's at it again, cuz I've been working with Chris before in the past with Claudia on, on other things out there.
Yeah, I, I think...
And we got it all resolved.
I think the bottom line is it's a neighbor dispute between two neighbors and she just had something else to complain about. She was very nice and cordial the day Tom and I were out there.
Yeah, that's what Tom told me.
But, you know, I, that's why I sent you the emails, to document the emails in case it came back up again. But yeah, so...
Okay, good. I just...
And then, you know, that's really where I've been spending the bulk of the time this last week, week and a half. On the fire mitigation grant, I spoke to Jen Dietz at Ready Set Go yesterday. We are, we got an extension through March 31st. It looks like they're going to extend us through April 30th. The map that I sent you, the red parcels were all the ones we're working. The yellow ones were ones that I'm trying to get a procurement to proceed into. And then there was a couple of blue ones that are maybes. I did submit a second procurement order yesterday, because if I don't have that approval first before I spend money, then I'm out of luck. I won't get reimbursed. Jen's really happy with what we're doing. Some other folks on their Ready Set Go grants aren't using all their money. So we'll probably not only get an extension in time, but a little bit more money. So I have, I'm, I'm trying to meet, our original scope of work was 15 homes and 50 acres. Right now, we're at nine homes and 34 acres. We're trying to add to that.
Is that ground to match it, Grant, or is that...
The original budget we submitted was, they were gonna give us 50. 5,000 was coming from PIL funds and 5,000 is considered de minimis, which is basically Meredith's time, my time, I'm gonna log everybody's time and we'll see. And then when we went out and set up the permissions to enter on the lots, we decided to add a 25% cost share, so that's actually bumped our budget up higher, because now landowners are buying in. And once they saw the work getting done on Chris Work's property and on Duncan's property, Roger at the town hall and I've both been getting more calls from people and so the list has expanded. And I'm hoping I'll hear back today that we get the expansion. It won't go out. I wrote a sole source justification. It won't go out for bid again, because Kevin's up there, he's working. It wouldn't be timely to put any of it out for bid. He'll just keep going and he's happy to do that. So it's really come together and it's just, there's a lot of paperwork coming up with everything.
Is Duncan's, I don't know if you can see on your map, number eight?
Duncan's is six.
Six.
Eight is Richie Martinez.
Okay, and then nine is Works?
Nine is Works, yeah.
Okay, alright.
No, let's see. Seven is Chris Works. I think nine is...
Oh, cuz his goes clear down to the road.
Nine is not Duncan's. It's the other folks. I can't think of the names.
That's okay. And then your yellow highlighted A area is, backs up to...
A is, is Duncan's also. So six is Duncan's and A. So I'm asking her to let me go ahead and add on A. It's vacant. There's no home. But I want a bigger fuel break in there, because it's protecting Bunker Hill Road a little bit more. If we can do more, that may not happen, but Duncan's are on board and they're willing to make a cost share, cuz they're really happy with what we did on their first part. So A's kind of up in the air. And then you get into B is Loves, C is V Hills, D is Bouchard, I think is how you say their name. E is Dale Hoyg, if I can get him signed on board. Where's my F? Oh, F and G are right back up there by Sugar Lots Circle again. Both of those homes are really well mitigated, so it wouldn't be all that acreage. We may be looking to add like an acre or two. There's a lot of mistletoe there and there's some other sort of insect die-off. And so we may just block those and say, hey, you know, if we did this and this, it would improve forest health. And then H way up to the end is Dan Wilson. And his is a real steep, heavily treed one that if we do that, it's gonna be a higher cost. The contractor said he wouldn't do that at 1,300 an acre. He'd go up to 1,800 an acre, which is what both other contractors, the low, the next bids were 1,800 an acre.
So the road that goes by Claudia Morris's house?
Bunker, uh-huh.
Bunker or Bunker Hill?
Bunker Hill, I think. Bunker Hill Road, yeah.
And does A go down that far or not?
It probably goes down at that triangle and touches hers. Are you on the assessor's site?
Yes.
Yeah.
Let me see if I can...
Does that help you? Yeah, it'll be getting close to her if we go do that, especially if we work all the way down to it. I can't tell.
Whose place is A?
Duncan's. Cuz I'm guessing this is Claudia's lot right here? Is that Claudia or...? She's gotta be, she's gotta be here or here.
That's what I was thinking. I'm not sure about that, but that's what I'm trying to...
Yeah, and I'm not sure who owns this right here. Oh, the other thing. While you're looking for that, over... The one that's sort of due north of A, there's a house on. And so I looked to add those guys yesterday when I was on the site and pulling up names. And I reached out to JD and I said, JD, this land, this lot shows a vacant lot, but I'm, I sent him a picture. I said, I see a house on this vacant lot. So JD went out yesterday and I'm sure he's probably getting ahold of Roger, but we found an illegal structure on one of the lots. And he doesn't know how long it's been there or anything, but he's on it.
So I'm wondering if...
Is that Claudia?
Yeah. So I'm wondering if this is the, gosh. This is the A part of that map. I just can't quite transpose it to. But my point would be that when we went out and looked, clearly there's been no encroachment upon Claudia's property with this mitigation. There were vehicle tracks up of that road. She was adamant about them tearing up that road. We drove up it. Wasn't any damage to that road. It was normal mud tracks.
And Chris told me that she was out harassing and taking pictures.
Yeah. Video taping the whole thing.
Yeah, we talked. At what, at what point, we've been dealing with this lady for, forever. At what point do we say, we've done all we're gonna do, Ms. Claudia, if you feel that you've been infringed upon, contact an attorney?
We'll talk to the sheriff.
Duncan, we'd have to be real careful on boundaries.
Too much, man. I mean, if she has legitimate complaint, I'm 100% in favor of fixing it. I'm not sure she's that way at all. I feel it's just a, I feel she's harassing.
She's harassing the county. She is. Harasses everybody.
I just wanna say, I'm just putting this on the table, not making a suggestion or anything, but maybe it's time to say, you know, Ms. Claudia, we have listened to you forever. We have done our best to accommodate you. We're doing no more. If you feel that there's another issue, don't contact us. Contact your attorney and we'll deal within the court.
And...
I mean, I'm not looking to get a civil lawsuit, but there's a limited amount of resources we can get out there.
She, originally, when Chris got... She did get an attorney who was just doing whatever she said, which was crazy.
Good.
We got her straightened out. We took, made her take down her hook pillars. You remember the rock pillars? She put an infringement. So we got her ironed out. So she's, she was quiet for a while, but for some reason, she's coming back wanting to keep her road, her road.
I, um...
I don't, I, I'll tell you, I will be absolutely adamant about this county paying to make this a hard road. I, I will do it.
No, it's our, it's our road. It's not a private road.
I think eventually, you know, we're gonna have to go. Silver Cliff went through this trying to determine legally who owned that road.
Right.
I can't sit here today and say I know for a fact what the results of that was.
Well, that's the one where I sent a letter to her and her attorney saying that it was an easement, you know, from way back in, what, 1960s? A long, long time. It's been over 21 years before she ever bought her property. And it's, it's clearly a county easement across there.
Yeah, and we resolved it. And so I thanked her for graveling our road, but we're maintaining, it's a county right of way, period.
And Roger Camper told me that as it goes through the ranch until it leaves Silver Cliff Ranch, it's a platted Town of Silver Cliff road.
Right, and it's a 60-foot right of way.
It's not her driveway, it's, it's Bunker Hill Road.
Right.
Um, and she put, she, she says she put in $10,000 of improvements. The Town of Silver Cliff thanked her.
Yeah. And we thanked her for graveling our part of it.
Thank you, no, I mean...
Yeah. Uh, Roger told me the Town of Silver Cliff is completely behind this grant. Um, we are making a muddy mess, you know, it's full on mud season up on
That's why I wasn't...
Sugarloaf's road.
Everybody.
But he said though, you know, they don't, their grader's broke. But he said that the, uh, you know, the repair to the road is up on him, on, on the town. So they're happy with everything that's going on. I think they're really gonna be happy that we can expand it a little bit and get this work done. They're, um, I'm hoping that they, they will be our demonstration site as we move forward with public education and maybe hosting the wildfire preparedness day here. Yeah, and get people excited about this. And, and I think that the more we do
The more they're gonna want.
Positive here, that it's gonna help us for future grants because, um, they're gonna look at us as having done a good job.
Well, I digress. I apologize for that.
No, that's okay.
I think Mrs. Livengood's ready to bail on us.
I have, uh, on my second page here.
Yeah.
Lost my second page. I had a couple of notes, oh, here it is. Um, that I wanted to make sure. Now, we talked, the mop meetings up here, March 13th. And I have doctor's appointments.
Yeah.
Kit said he has it on his calendar. Tom said he has it on his calendar. Some of the Verdi folks are going, so I appreciate people representing us there. Um, they're gonna talk about that wildfire community preparedness day. It's supposed to be May 5th, which is when I hope to take vacation. So, um, we're looking at maybe doing something in June if you're... Um, March 19th, there's a South Region meeting for the FEMA post wildfire grant. Well, here's the co-trained class. Um, I'm wondering if somebody from Custer should represent the March 19th meeting and I may go. But that's that FEMA mitigation money. And I know FEMA's not a great pot of money, but, um, it's also, you know, a lot of money. So, um, then the only other thing we didn't, I didn't mention was, uh, DHSEM is gonna come in and audit all my homeland security grants. They've been threatening for three years. They actually scheduled an audit yesterday for, uh, April 25th.
Wow.
So, yeah, they're behind, so, but that's all I have.
Okay, well, thank you. I stand up here.
No, no worries. Finance is my favorite.
Thanks.
That's what the job is all about.
Thank you, Lois. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. You're requesting a raid now, right?
I did. He doesn't, I'm going to.
With, uh, if there are no objections, we will stand in recess for three or four minutes. But, the meeting will come back to order. Our next item of business is the clerk's re...
You're about to get charged.
Wow, I got worst judging practice 25 minutes ago.
Oh, Lord.
Good morning, how are you?
Yeah, she's ready.
We have a lot of things to talk about, so that will have to happen after the commission meeting.
That's a well.
How are you?
I'm good.
Good.
Thanks. Um, so mostly my biggest thing is the jail nurse.
Good.
Still going super well.
Good.
Um, I actually kinda started doing it
Ahead of time.
A little before the first.
As the need arose.
Thank God, they called me, yeah. So, um, but yeah, it's going good. I'm getting some protocol's put together and, um, seen a couple of guys already that are squared away that weren't before. So, so yeah, we're doing, going in a positive direction there, definitely. Health fair's the big shindig right now, um, April 6th. Going full bore with that. Um, opioid coalition. How much do we wanna talk about that?
I'll tell you something about it. I don't wanna talk about it at all. No, I'm teasing. I don't know, who's involved in that locally?
Um, just me.
Okay.
And, uh, somebody else that wants to be, that's not gonna be. Um, so we're, we're working on, we, we have just a regional opioid coalition, which is Region 13. So that's Custer, Fremont, Lake, Chaffee counties. We've had an individual make some threatening statements towards us and, um, has filed, I don't know if he's officially filed anything or what, but he's saying that we're being discriminatory, which is what his cry is always towards every organization that he...
So he's after the opioid coalition specifically?
Mm-hmm.
Didn't know that. Yeah.
Same guy?
Yes.
We all know who it is.
Um, so essentially, we're gonna, for all meetings going forward, we'll have the sheriff's department involved and they'll have a deputy there.
That's terrible.
And...
We have to do that.
Mm-hmm. But hopefully that will de-escalate any future...
Were those meetings held?
Um, they're all, they're, we, we rotate. So the last one that was in Custer County was in January. So we probably won't have another one in Custer County until July. So...
You keep it posted on that?
Yeah. But they are doing good things as far as, um, you know, cleaning up. We don't have such an issue, knock on wood, here as far as like dirty needles being left around, syringes, that kinda stuff. We're not seeing that. Um, we'd like to keep it that way though, so prevention is our main focus for Custer County.
It's alright. I didn't know opioids were injected.
So heroin and fentanyl, um, that's all opioids that are being injected. Yeah. Carfentanil. Um, so we do have, I got, I think, 30 boxes of Narcan in Custer County. So if anybody needs to come get it from me at the clinic, I can just give it to you with the training. Um, I've also trained the SO and they'll have up-to-date Narcan now, so none of theirs is expired, which is good. So, we did the Amish screenings, that went really good. We found a few kiddos that have some eye issues that are gonna get taken care of, so that's cool.
Good.
Yeah. Any questions about the rest of mine in the court?
I have a question.
Yeah?
Is anti-vax epidemic, that's what I'm gonna call it, are you doing anything to educate people who points to vaccinating?
Um, you know, I really haven't done a whole lot. I mean, I have, I put out several things on Facebook recently about like what our rates are, which are lacking in Custer County. We're at 93% vaccination rate. And in order to be considered, um, not at risk for, and for an outbreak, we have to be at 95%. Um, so I've done a little bit of education that way, you know, just saying that, what I just said, that we're, we're at risk. Um, I do send out information about when our clinics are and what we have available. So, but I think we could probably do more as far as, um, maybe ads in the paper, more Facebook.
Does the clinic have any requirements, like for them to treat someone? They, I'm talking about children, of course, do they, do they have to be vaccinated? I mean, is there any kind of requirements?
None.
Does the school have any requirements that you must be vaccinated before you could take school?
No, they have, um, I mean, there is a requirement, but you can sign the waiver. All, so all you have to do is sign the waiver saying you're opting out and, and you can, there's probably a third of our school is not vaccinated.
Seriously?
Yeah.
Give it to Denver. Our, our state legislatures have that on their list of taking away parents' rights, deciding to dis- signing waivers. So, that'll be handled soon.
Okay, that's an issue. Okay. Vaping's being handled through Custer County Kids Council primarily?
Um, yeah, and public health. Yeah, we're doing a lot of stuff through public health about vaping too. Um, mostly education in the community about how bad it is because I think people don't really, they're, well, their kids come home and say, oh, it's just flavored water. Well, it's not actually. Um, I went to a class, Carmelina and I both went to a class last week on what vaping actually is. And it's scary stuff, actually. It's, it's actually more nicotine because it's more pure nicotine than all the rest of the junk in a cigarette. But, mm-hmm, it's a, it's a device they use to, to smoke tobacco. And some, some of them have marijuana, but it's really far less used for marijuana. It's, it's not the, the method of choice for marijuana, so. But, um, but it is, and it, and it does create, there's 200 puffs in one vape, like a, in one Juul pod, um, which is essentially the same as a pack of cigarettes. But what we're finding is that people are using one Juul pod in a day, essentially. So they're essentially pack, smoking a pack of cigarettes a day when normally they may be only smoking a half a pack or less or more.
But it's naive, but I truly felt, maybe I heard this on the news, this TV ads or something, that it was a, it was a safe alternative to cigarettes because it didn't have the nicotine and the carcinogens and stuff. Is that not true?
That's not true. That's the, that's what the industry is... That's where the industry is misleading the American population.
Really?
Yes, because...
Is DNA involved in this?
Yes, and, you know, the Philip Morris Company and the cigarette big, you know, tobacco people are sneaky. Sneaky, sneaky. And so they, and they still do, they still do, um, promote it as a healthy alternative to cigarettes.
That's what I've always thought.
And a way to quit smoking. Well, you maybe quit smoking cigarettes, but you're still vaping and so you're still getting
Ingesting.
Getting crap in your lungs.
Exactly. And there's still, um, formaldehyde and, um, the same stuff, I can't remember, dioc- diocenthy or something, I don't know. The chemical that gives you popcorn lung essentially is still in it. So, yeah, it's still really bad. And people think, well, at least it's not harming other people because when they blow it, you know, like secondhand smoke, it's just water vapor. That's also not true.
Really?
It is, there are like aluminum and like heavy metals stuff in that huge plume of smoke that comes out when they, after they smoke it.
And it seems like it's more that comes out than a regular cigarette.
Oh, yeah, it's tons more.
You sure see more of it, that's for sure.
Yeah, you can.
A huge plume.
And I'm convinced there's a psychological boost for vapers to see that big cloud vapor.
Yeah, they, there's terms for it. They call them vape gods and goddesses, the more they can like make that plume or do fancy things with the smoke. And, yeah, it's really... And it's appealing to teenagers because it comes in cotton candy and fruit juice flavor, you know, I mean?
Looks cool.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So...
What else, ma'am?
Sorry, I didn't mean to go for that.
No, no, you're fine.
I asked, so... Do you have pneumonia vaccine yet?
Pneumonia? Yes. Shingles? No. Shingles is what you want. Um, no, I don't know. I'm gonna come, make a phone call today and see why we're being so, cause now we're at a year past when they said that we would get it originally. So...
That's a multi-vaccine, isn't it?
What do you mean by multi-vaccine?
That you have to have like three of them.
Two.
Yeah. Two to be effective, but yeah.
You got a big weekend, personally.
Hopefully.
Not public health nurse-y, but...
No, if we can get the fairgrounds
Waterized.
Thought out, cause right now we have no water to the saddle club, so I don't really know.
That's not true. I threw the toilets and drank out of the faucet last night. Make sure you get those right.
Yeah.
Or, wait, maybe I did drink out of it.
Well, that's actually really good to know. So they got it at least to that point or...
We had water for two hours during a meeting last night, yes.
Okay, well...
And they're working on it today.
Yeah, Jerry's over there right now. Okay, well, that's actually really good to know, cause I thought we were gonna have to postpone it because we didn't have water.
Believe that's the case. And I think for me, they could tolerate a leak and keep that activity on.
Terms and leaks at the same time.
Yeah, good point. Do we need another break since we are talking about those or... But I might be speaking out of turn.
No, that's actually really good, cause I thought also that we might just do water potties outside, which is horrible in the winter, but whatever, and haul water in. But that's also a giant pain for a hundred people.
Thing I'm telling you was, as of last night at 8 o'clock. So hopefully they'll make some progress today.
Would be splendid.
And I do believe, I mean, if it was me, I would say let's tolerate a leak for three hours or four hours and keep it on the schedule and do it. You've got a lot of time and effort and money spent, so, anyway. Uh, saddle club.
The Rodeo Queen Ball.
Yeah, Rodeo Queen.
Weekend, yeah, the coronation ball, so...
So, unless it's deep into that, we appreciate your efforts. Alright, ma'am, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it. See you.
Thanks.
Didn't get an answer from your husband about tomorrow, Friday night either, so...
I think he's gonna pass, cause he has, um, hunter safety the next morning, plus then the Queen's Ball that night.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's already turned about not getting enough sleep this weekend, so...
I will take that as an official pass. Um... Okay. So Miss Donna's on her way? Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. See ya. Did you see that Alicia's...
Let's wave goodbye to her. But I'll wave to you too, I'm, I'm an equal opportunity.
Yeah, and there who has the, um, mobile units, so...
They used to set up at Ross, at Rabbit Roost, Ranger Roost.
Okay, yeah, that's a good spot. Yeah, I'll give them a call, that's on my agenda to do too, at some point.
Well, I just, you know, it came up, so I...
On the 8 million...
How come we don't do that one?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be good.
See you, kiddo.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. What's up, Miss Peggy?
Tell them my news is on the phone for you, Clint.
Again?
Again?
What you do now, Clint?
So, they want, no one they can meet with you. Do you wanna, um, is that real quick or are you guys still tied up? We can have...
Why, who they gonna send? I wanna talk to some guy, I want a pretty female.
Oh, Lord.
I don't know, Marilyn answered the phone, I'm just a relayer.
Um, they wanna send somebody up here, is that what we were talking about, with their touch?
Boy, answer it, Clint, do a lock, doctor.
Another county has joined the ranks.
Which one?
Otero.
What, what are they doing?
Joined the ranks of the...
Sanctuary County.
Good morning.
Oh, morning, I know.
Brought you some goodies.
Well, this is a lot to drop off on the way.
Miss Donna, I left my evaluations for the sector. Do you have another pack out?
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, we're only forty minutes late this morning, so...
Well, I'll make it up in my time because it's always short because, there's those.
Okay. And gentlemen, you did receive a, an email, not a, an email, from Miss Donna about the handwritings.
I did. I had a question as to where they were being sent. Did we resolve that?
Where are the handwritings?
Where that email was sent.
Where it was sent? Oh, yeah, we did have, actually. Let me gather my thoughts and I'll pursue that.
You're a gathering cow.
Well, and my gathering skills are flowing down. Um, let me see if I can find that.
You're wondering why I'm sending it to both?
Uh, I think that was my question, yes.
Because the Sentinel said they would do it for free and the Tribune, so I just send it to all of you all at once rather than...
Because I didn't know we were sending it to either, ever.
Yeah, it goes to the newspapers and, and if it can ma, uh, the only bummer thing is if I'm a little too late and, you know, the payday hits, they have to do it twice. Um, but the Sentinel, it does it for free for public information, so I send them the word.
I'm fine, look, the more people we can get it to, the more transparent we are, that's all I can say. Thank you.
Yep, I just ship it.
You're welcome.
All right.
And, ooh, I have a dentist appointment. It's like, big time. I'm not sure if it's the Crown one or not.
Eight teeths. Eight teeths.
All come back in a barrel and in pain. And they're like nine hundred dollars now.
Out of pocket? Just nine hundred.
The, the, the top, so it's eighty percent paid for. Thank you. And then some of these didn't get, um, signed, so I was gonna give you a pile of these to... And I don't think it matters who... Initials at the bottom for me, if you'll catch that stack.
Oh, you want to post that?
See, I gave you the big stack.
I missed the instruction sheet.
But boy, that guy is a fast initiator.
Yeah.
Are you on break right now?
See you later, call me.
Do you want to show those ones on the bottom?
These are the backups to those.
And, yes, and it's all of them, whether it was Human Services or, remember. Thank you. Okay, I think that's it. I'll put them away.
Let me just...
Oh, shoot, cow. Man, I'd have been back in like, flash, yeah. Well, I would have got them sealed in first and then had the misfortune of undoing them all and starting over.
You could be like me and just send them out.
But that, that's all I got. I mean, you know what I do, because you either approved it, told me to, or saw the after effects, one, the other. I know, it's, there's never anything exciting or...
That little mushroom-shaped cloud over your office. That was the after effect?
Yeah, sometimes.
So we got our process set up for this afternoon, do we?
Yep, I think we're, we're all ready.
Did you give us something other than what the packets are that we saw already? I didn't take anything home with me.
And I, it is, I, Jay had his, but left his, Tom probably has his, and you didn't pick up yours.
Right.
Um, but it's really just everything that you saw.
It's what I looked at before, just the ones we're doing.
On there.
So it's over there?
Yes.
Good.
We viewed it last night and then left it.
On there.
Uh, yeah, we're gonna meet a little early. You prepared for that, correct?
Yes.
What time's a little early?
I think it was a quarter till Tom had sent out to make sure everybody was on the same page rather than, once the first candidate was there. That's always kind of fun.
Yeah. We're gonna be here twelve.
And good luck to you, all I can tell you, because it's...
I'm not looking forward to this, you know, but what a wonderful problem.
I know, isn't that great? But our last two, we've got that same problem, so that's, that's always a good thing.
Kind of problem.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I was just looking for that, I would maybe print out some copies of that, there it is, I believe. It's the twelve forty-five door, so I can print some copies.
That was from Jackie.
They want you to sing the National Anthem on the news tonight, huh?
Uh, I can do about as good as Roseanne Barr did.
She, Christmas, that is really bad. Oh, man.
That was a black eye in America's face.
Just say no.
Your fucking...
Um...
Oof, you have been a bad gaveler, look at that.
I know, I got a little emotional the other day.
It's a little Jerry Wayne sometimes.
She's been out there all day.
By him a little bit, doesn't it?
Because he drank out of the toilet.
Okay, I forgot, as I was coming down the hall, I thought.
And that's why he's had a crappy disposition.
Oh, that, yeah.
That was good.
Tonight, well, I'll let her finish first then I'll talk.
Um, yeah, and you're, were you planning on being at our three o'clock meeting as well or not?
Uh, if you want me to call them, because I thought I would call at that moment.
That's why I'm asking.
On there, on there, yeah.
Then you would, yeah, I just printed out some of the process thing with the times and, and again, just so we don't end up with egg on our face, we were gonna refer to the candidates by number until we actually vote, to protect the innocent. So, yeah, don't you gentlemen think it would be appropriate for Miss Donna to be at the three o'clock meeting so she couldn't see the results of the vote and then make a...
Well, actually, probably I would just, if you didn't want me here, I'd stand outside the doors, I'd get here so I can know.
I would like, I'd like your...
Oh.
Public meeting, that's right.
Just, as, as a kind of order, just a question, are we gonna suspend this meeting and re-...
No.
Be at three, or you're gonna...
We're gonna just wanna do a new meeting. Yes, thank you for asking, but, yeah. We're gonna adjourn and then call a new meeting at two or three.
You do?
Sound like a plan.
It's like for overtime.
Anything else, ma'am?
Nobody.
Counselor, did you have something for Miss Donna or just in general? Okay, all right, very good, thank you for your work. We're gonna, we're gonna try to get a roundtable discussion to talk about reimbursement funding for emergency stuff. Spoke to Miss Howard about that this morning, so...
Maybe, and maybe we can get Christie, um...
Yeah, that'd be great. She'd be Christie or Cindy.
Christie, well, actually Christie Holt, yeah.
Another one? There's another one?
Yeah, I was gonna call her.
Confusing more.
Well, please do so because I have no idea who you're talking about when you don't, so...
Call it Donna.
All right, thank you, ma'am, appreciate it.
So who the heck's the clerk?
That brings us to the next item of visitor, the next staff report, Madam, the floor. Oh, shall we, counselor, real quick?
That phone call was from Andy Cohen from Channel Five. He does a lot of this investigative reporting stuff and he was asking about the resolution that we passed. He said he'd gotten a call from an attorney in Pueblo, I, it's an attorney, this, I went to law school with this guy, he's sort of the MH of the legal profession. Even, even way back in law school, he was always sending off angry letters to the editor and everything, and he's been angry his entire career. But he called and left a message for me wanting to know what that was all about and how we could do that. I tried to call him back, but I just got a recording, so I just left a short response, but I know he's the one that called Channel Five about this and wanted to know exactly what was going on. Andy Cohen wanted to know what's going on. I just said it was a resolution, um, which is not an official law up here, it's a statement of position of the Board of County Commissioners, and I said the ultimate decision on whether or not to enforce a court order, if there should be one of these red flag orders in Costa County, would be up to the sheriff. Uh, this was just a statement, our resolution is a statement of support for the sheriff, whatever he decides to do, sends us serious questions about the constitutionality, since it obviously ignores fundamental due process, the way this law is written now and that, uh, it would need to, our position was that we would wanna see it challenged in court and have an ultimate determination on its constitutionality, but it's not, it's not the Commissioner's call, it's, it's the sheriff's call on whether or not he wants to enforce that provision if, if it comes out.
Basically the same as Fremont County.
It's, and I, and other counties have adopted it too. Montezuma County has, I think Teller County has, or is going to...
Otero.
And Otero did.
Otero did, uh, Weld County is looking at the last I heard. Um, he wanted to get a copy of the resolution. I told him to send me his email, and let's see if he did. Yeah, so, 'cause he, can you email it to him? Okay.
Yeah, if you wanna get me that email or send me the email or something, I can do that.
Can you just take it off here real quick?
Yeah.
Just send him the resolution.
Is it not on the website?
Yeah, I thought it probably was, but I wasn't sure. And it may not be on there yet.
Sometimes.
I don't see it.
Touch his, uh, his name and it'll come up.
Oh, there.
What happened to the gentleman who wanted to... Eric Spencer.
Okay. Yeah, he, he talked to Alyssa and that's all you needed?
Oh, okay. I thought he was here to talk, yeah.
Okay. It's an issue discussed with...
Maybe that's why he didn't wanna take his cap off, maybe he had a skilled condition.
Yeah, he wanted...
Found out he could talk to Alyssa.
Right. Yeah, I don't see...
Vaccine.
That was nineteen oh two, correct?
That's what I was just gonna say, I think that's nineteen...
Nineteen oh two, and it's, it's not posted. I'll shoot big boy an email real quick.
Yes, nineteen oh two.
It was nineteen oh one.
No, marijuana.
One was the hoo, Marahucci.
Yeah, you're right, it was nineteen oh two.
Right.
Nineteen oh...
I wrote a statement about one of the...
Resolution? Resolution nineteen oh one was the holidays. Nineteen oh two is the...
Is the, yeah.
An ordinance nineteen oh one.
All right, you're right.
Was the marijuana.
That's right, and that was...
Different, different.
So we want the Sanctuary County, right?
Resolution. I'm waiting on the clerk.
Uh, I thought we were still waiting on...
How come, um, those...
Council, but...
Those certificates are bigger now.
What certificates?
That's my old one, I haven't hung the other one. Uh, this certificate you gave me is bigger than the frame.
Are you done, sir, counselor?
Is it a different machine?
No, it's the frame.
Oh, you cut that down? Ah, okay.
Okay.
I'll get a bigger frame.
Madam clerk?
Me?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, correct?
No, you did not, because I wasn't gonna have anything, and then last night I came up with things.
Okay.
Are they good things?
Because I know you like to have things, so...
Well, good, look at that, she did it.
I even printed a thing for the counselor.
That's amazing. He always appreciates that, and he look at the great look on his face, he's just...
I know.
Yeah.
It's my sincere smile.
That's your sincere smile.
That was, that was a good one, Clint.
Okay, so the first thing I wanna talk about is I, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up about a thing that's been going on in my office. Um, in November, it was discovered by one of the other counties that, um, the December renewals on certain plates, um, the specific ownership tax was not figured right. And so, um, that's the tax that when you, when a vehicle's brand new, they, um, you have an MSRP of what that vehicle is worth, and so the state takes eighty-five percent of that MSRP and that's the taxable value. That's what they figure this SOT on. And, uh, as that vehicle ages, it goes down. And because of our new computer system, um, and how they figure out how those vehicles age, when, uh, December renewals rolled over into January, they didn't figure it right. So, uh, they discovered it in November, thought it would fix itself, it didn't fix itself, so they finally came up with a fix and we, when they finally let all of us know in December, we could manipulate ones that came through and fix them, um, but it didn't get fixed till January eleventh. And so there was a lot in the state that got overpaid. So, uh, after a couple months of working and talking and figuring out what we were gonna do, um, all those people are gonna get reimbursed. The state said, they gave the counties the option, do you wanna reimburse them or do you want us to reimburse them? Um, talking with Virginia, she said, let the state reimburse them because we had seventy-six vehicles to reimburse, so that would have been seventy-six checks that Virginia would have had to cut. And so what we did is we sent the state one big check for all of our reimbursements and then they'll send all of the reimbursements to, um, the people.
The individual.
Right, because the ownership tax stays in the county and that's the portion that gets divvied up amongst school, fire, all the entities gets divvied up amongst. So, that got kinda messed up too because those fees were already dispersed. So when they dispersed those, once they send all the checks out and we get everything all straight, then whatever month it ends up being, um, those fees will be adjusted and they just won't, those entities just won't get so much that, um, that month.
And do we need to communicate this to each of those entities or not?
Um, I think that Suzie has talked to, I know she's talked to the school, um, and I don't know if they'll send a little letter out, um, letting them know or, uh, it wasn't, even though our amount, our amount was, uh, nine thousand three sixty-two twenty-six, which sounds big, but then once it's divvied up, it wasn't huge, um, not like I can imagine Denver County and some, El Paso, some of those counties, it was gonna be pretty big. And I just put some figures in here, the state won't reimburse under, anything under ten dollars. We had, um, five that were under ten dollars, the lowest being a penny, the highest seven dollars and forty-one cents, a penny, yeah. Um, there was two that were undercharged by a dollar fifty. Why that happened, they have no idea. Obviously, I'm not gonna go after those two people for a dollar fifty. Um, and so I just wanted to make you guys aware of that in case you get any, it was on the news, um, but we only, I only had two phone calls from people saying, hey, mine was a December, do I get money back? And one person did and the other person didn't, so...
Okay.
And as you can see, some of those, the refunds range from twenty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents to a thousand ninety-two fifty-nine. That's a pretty, that's a pretty big overpayment that you, yeah.
Probably my truck.
I could guess, one of my buddies would wanna be coming in here claiming that because that was...
You're the only one I know that got new one.
Be about a third of what he paid, so I'm sure he'd jump in line for that.
Yeah.
So you got the ability to type in somebody's name and see if they're due a refund or not?
They, what the state did is they sent us out a spreadsheet of all of ours and, so, yeah. So then we looked at it, pulled out the ones under ten dollars and the ones over and...
We probably oughta, I don't have one of the papers here, but I think maybe both papers might wanna put something in.
Put something in.
Just so people understand that... Refunds are coming. Well, yeah, but I think some would say that this was a computer issue with the new computer system not enabled. It wasn't a clerk and recorder's office.
Yeah, well, and I think anybody that's been in my office since August to do any kind of motor vehicle transaction knows that we have a few, anytime you switch computer systems, you're gonna have problems.
She was having a problem today.
But, yeah, every month it seems like it's a new, so I would imagine maybe, maybe once we get to August, we'll have worked through all of those problems.
And then we'll have a new system in September.
Yeah. Yeah. Don't say that.
Kelly, that formula.
Thank you for following us, I was unaware of this.
Was from the state, right?
It wasn't the formula so much as the, so if you have a vehicle that, if you buy a vehicle this year, and it's a 2019, but you don't buy it until November, in January, we consider it a year old already, actually, two years old, because we count nineteen and twenty. So, that was where the problem was. It wasn't drop, it wasn't figuring the age of the vehicle right, and so then, it didn't put it in the right category to drop it down.
It was statewide, so it came down from online?
Yes. Yeah, statewide. And it was a glitch in the computer program.
Why are you giving us your?
Well, I think I understand why we got these, and I want.
Yes. So, is there no more questions on?
No, go ahead, move on.
All right.
Thirty dash ten dash three nineteen, part F says that the clerk shall, upon request, provide pastries and/or other.
F, I don't see a F. What are you talking about? No.
It's paged.
No.
No?
That's not on my copy.
It's on mine? Yeah, I got it. And, and.
Right here.
And coffee.
Yes, ma'am.
So, these, I just wanna have a discussion about, I, these three statutes address what I, what my duties are as far as you guys, what I'm supposed to do. And basically, you know, take your minutes, um, on your, it, I was talking to Meredith about it this morning, and it's kinda, it's sort of funny right now, because what's in statute and what I do and what Meredith does sort of is a mix. So, when Chris Lang first became the administrative assistant, and Debbie was clerk, Debbie deputized Chris to do some of the things that this, that these statutes address. And, and then we did that, I did that with Brenda, I deputized her, and I have not deputized Meredith yet, because I wanted to have this discussion so that we're all on the same page. The, the taking of the minutes and going to the, to your meetings and all that, I'm good with it, it's, that works for me. Once in a while, on the twentieth, I will be gone to conference, and that's when you have your Wetmore meeting. And so, in a case like that, I would have Meredith do, she would just set it up, and then she would just do the minutes.
Legally, she has to be deputized to do that, is that what you're saying?
Yes, has to be one of my deputies.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And Lori is my deputy, but with my office being as busy as it's been, it's hard for her sometimes to come in here, even though sometimes she will come in here if there's time, and, but a lot of times, especially when we go to Wetmore, it's just as easy for Meredith to do it. And Meredith is more up on what's going on with you guys, so if a question comes up, she could maybe answer it, whereas Lori can answer about, yeah, something previous or something. So, if you guys are good with me deputizing Meredith to do that, then I think I'll just go ahead and do that, so that she can take care of minutes for me.
Is there a motion?
I don't think it does, cause it's.
Sarah, you're, you're the one that's deputizing.
Because she's your, she's your administrative assistant, yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, just a suggestion would be, if it's overkill, it's, it's just overkill, but if we don't do what we should've, then it might pose a problem, so I'm gonna suggest maybe we oughta do it, you know?
Is there a motion?
Oh, boy.
But wait, before you make a motion, let me, let's get the rest of it out there. So, the, the thing that.
Yeah, let's talk about the money.
Yeah, talk about the money. The thing that I, I'm really torn with is the keeping of all of your documents and stuff. I told Meredith this morning, all that stuff that she keeps in there, I'm supposed to keep, but I don't want to keep.
But it doesn't say to keep that in your office.
I don't have the room, I don't have the, yes.
That matters to her story.
But as, as administrative assistants change and stuff, some may go through new, the drawers and say, oh, well, we don't need that, we don't need that. And I wanna, I mean, you guys know, just from the time you've been in here, there's a lot of times, we gotta go back ten years to find something that, and so I wanna make sure that certain things are kept. So this is my thought. Things that you guys signed, or that there was a motion to approve, I feel that even if your administrative assistant kept a copy of it, I need to have that original, or at least a copy of the signed original, in my office, so that I can keep that.
When you say in your office, you mean physically in your office?
Yeah. Yes.
So, are you proposing to work with Meredith and help work up a plan between the two of you on what she'll be keeping and what she'll be keeping?
Yeah. And so, whenever, whenever, like yesterday, when you guys passed your, the, um, grant, the grant thing. And I said, give me a copy of that, that was why, not because I wanted to see what it was all about, but just that I, you guys pass that, five years from now, didn't we do something like that on grants? Does somebody have a copy of that somewhere? Then I can go and dig that copy out.
Good.
It was a pleasure then.
So.
You ready for me to move this?
Now you can move.
I move that we allowed, that we allowed Meredith to support Kelly and let Kelly deputize her to keep the records as Kelly needs to be kept, either here or in her, provided for her own.
I'll second the motion. The movement that seconded authorized Kelly to deputize Meredith Nichols, our administrative assistant, to also serve as a deputy secretary to the board. Further discussion?
Assistant.
Assistant.
Just a question.
Actually, that is a secretary to the board.
Right. You're the administrative, you're a deputy.
A clerk, a clerk to the board.
Clerk to the board.
Clerk to the board.
Oh, okay. Yes, sir.
Will this impede in any way the normal duties that our, our administrative assistant does now?
No, and that, I had a discussion with Meredith this morning about that, because the administrative assistant's position has sort of grown, you know, when Chris did it, she just was a assistant to you guys. When Brenda came on, then she became an assistant to Donna, and so it's added, and now she's a grant, a grant professional. Yeah, now she's a grant professional. And so, I didn't wanna add more to her, and so, yeah, yeah.
It goes along with the, with the we have to see stuff? So it's not like a added on, it's just making sure that you get, like, just communications.
Right. And it's easy for, it's easier, because she's in here.
She's in here anyway, at the same meeting.
And like I said, she knows, she knows what's going on in here, and so.
Okay. Further discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion carries? Do you do that face-to-face, just you and her?
Uh, yes.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
You can talk now. You bored, Jen?
Any unfinished business?
No.
New business? With your permission, sir, prior to moving on to the discussion of the county water board, may I ask?
I just gotta extend an offer to the three of you, so KOA News will be here at one o'clock to interview me about the.
We heard something.
Sanctuary county and the flag bill. So if any of the three of you would like to come along.
Thank you for that invitation.
So.
At one o'clock?
At one o'clock.
Come into your office?
Just come to my office, and then I don't know, then we'll do it over here or there, I don't know, but.
We will be unavailable.
All three of us are.
We're interviewing for a job.
But I would like to tell you, cause Andy Cohen talked to me first, he told you that, and I.
He didn't tell me that he talked to you, he just said that he'd like to.
But I explained to him that this resolution is not an order to you, that you can't enforce that red flag law.
Right.
It's just that we support your decision on it, and that's what the other counties are doing, it's all pretty much identical.
Yeah, right.
And she's gonna send him a email, a copy of the resolution, so he's got it, but it's, so, and she said Otero County just passed it. And Monazuma County has, I think, and I don't know who Teller was.
Fremont did on the same day, Teller's working towards that.
Welders.
Welders, there's five or six that have done it now, then there's a couple that have said that they did something similar in 2013, and so they're not gonna redo another one specifically for this bill, but they've already made their position clear. So I think we're, we're like six or seven right now, with a bunch more considering it.
They said they were, they were contacted by Pueblo attorney, attorney, a guy named Lee Sternall actually called me on Friday, didn't get ahold of me, just left a message, and I called him back, and, cause he was calling about that, he was kind of angry, which is how he always has been the entire time I've known him, but I just told him basically the same thing that we're talking about here, is that we have very grave concerns about the constitutionality of that legislation, since it seems to completely ignore fundamental due process, and, and that's why we're leaving it to your discretion on whether or not, I guess in a particular case, if it's something that really looks flagrant, you might wanna enforce it, but.
Right.
It's up to you.
Due process, I mean, the way the system works now, I mean, we can use due process and do the same basic, I mean, there are some limitations, but, okay, I just thought I would extend that offer.
That's KOAA?
Channel five.
Channel five.
I'll have to run home, run home right now and change, so I don't have a lot of time.
Are you gonna look pretty?
Yeah, makeup, gotta get the makeup.
Well, I'm just gonna put my uniform on, because it'll be on state news everywhere tonight, so.
Look like a sheriff now.
Proud of you. Thank you, sir.
Yep, way to go.
Be sure to spell your name, Ray.
Okay. Next item of business, discussion of the county water board, Mr. Canda.
All right, I guess I don't take much time. This has nothing to do with our withdrawal from Upper Ark, you know, what got us thinking about this. So let me back up a couple of things. So I got, talking to a lot of people, as we all have, and we've been in a lot of meetings on this, on water issues, so I see, because I'm, as a person that uses water up here, both agriculturally and domestically, there are two needs that the county really has, is to really worry about the underground water, as well as surface water. The fact that Upper Ark's doing its thing is one issue, but there are others that are gonna continue to be bringing it up. So it's, we have a prosperity plan that depends on water as well, we have people that wanna buy and sell water locally, it's always gonna happen, regardless of what Upper Ark does. So I got thinking about a charter, to, because right now, the three of us do a lot of things, get involved with a lot of different things that take a lot of time, and we can't spend enough time on any one issue, that's why we have boards and committees. And so, I know that, I forget how many years ago, it was probably back in 1972, when they first started worrying about setting up the water augmentation for the county, and the Wet Mountain Water Board, Wet Mountain Valley Water Board is what it was called, was the staff. I asked several people, work, and I find bylaws for that, and the only place that I got a reference to, unless you found it, Tom, if you've seen the actual reference, a piece of paper on that.
I'm looking, I thought I had, but I'm not gonna quote.
Keith Hood did, he thought he had, he didn't, he told me to go to the state website, and then I asked Kelly to, how are we gonna find, if they actually filed a document, it wasn't set up as an authority board, it had no teeth to mitigate water issues for the county, it was a, it was a board that was set up to look at issues and, you know, help, help us help the people.
Do you know when it was set up?
Seven, he told me it was thirty-five years old, so that's probably a rough guess on Keith's part, was at least thirty-five years old. So, I got thinking, you know, the issue that we saw happen with the Upper Ark can happen with any other issue, I've heard of several other people wanting to set up their own water augmentation plans, outside of that. Donley's one of them, he's, he kept his water rights out of the conservancy for the land trust that he set up, however he's gotta set up, in order to use that water as to augment and do things for, you know, it's all good. Can't blame him for doing that. There are other issues, and when I interviewed and talked with a lot of people, I've talked to Randy Rusk, the Geerries, Scott Geary, water users on the surface, as well as thinking about commercial needs, like the towns, towns need water augmentation, if we're gonna grow any at all, or if they wanna attract any, any business, that, that we would have some purview over, or whether they do alone, they're gonna have to understand how much water they need, and, and what's it gonna impact, who's impacted by it. We are experts, but we need people focused on it, so I was, I, then, then I went to Senator Hoffs, talked to him, and I called him as late as last night, talked to him a couple of times about, not the issue of our augmentation dispute here on the current boundaries, but, you know, we, we were let down by the board over there, and were blindsided by actions that were occurring. How can we augment that? And so I thought about a couple of things. If we set up a committee, that would be the interface between the citizens, understanding the agricultural issues, like a rancher might have, and for example, everybody I've talked to says, you know, we do need probably on dry years, or ways to augment water, or store water, to use to release out of the valley somewhere and let it irrigate our own field. We need, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do a business anywhere, or a residence, it might be a residential business, that's just a bed and breakfast thing, they need to augment water from somewhere, either their own family use, or whatever. So we need some kind of a char, a group that we charter, I would call it a committee, I don't think we need to call it a board, and it connotes two different things, but we can, we should discuss it, that has maybe three goals there, one would be to take the citizens' issues. A citizen might come in here and say, I was just approached by a fountain, and they want to buy my water. And the neighbor next door hears about that, and he's got an issue with that transaction happening, and, and what are we gonna do about it? Well, there's several things that you can do, you can fight it yourself, spend a lot of money, or you go to the Upper Ark, you know, and see if they're interested in helping or buying it, or whatever, or whether it's somebody else. So you gotta get the citizens' input to what the issues are, and then secondly, you need to understand what are the, well, issues associated with other organizations like the Upper Ark. I felt like we were let down by that board, and even our reps on the board, not, 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 I'm not talking about, you know, you're new, Tom, and, and you got a lot of other things to do, they should've been aware of that, of that, and they should've taken you to the side, or, or Donley could have, and could've brought things to us sooner, maybe. But in the end, maybe, and so Senator Hoffs told me, this is what I came up with, an interface with them, is that they have a committee set up already, that consists of directors of the Upper Ark. They have a committee that does actually go around and work issues within the counties that they serve. An engineer sits on, several of the directors, and the people that are smart, you know, and they, they work issues with the local communities. Well, I didn't know that, and I would think that our committee oughta be engaged with them, not, not in those public meetings that they hold, these are separate meetings that they do, apparently, for other people. I would see the charter then take, the number one goal would be our committee works with citizens, they have issues, they could be working with the committee that they have set up on that issue or not, or a new issue that maybe the Upper Ark's gonna go do another boundary, they, they will do another phase, and I know they're gonna. another boundary, they, they will do another phase, and I know they're going to, they mentioned it to us, want to incorporate the blue line in a different spot, or a blue line in another county. It could impact this valley, if, you know, I know for, for truth, that their issue, their charter is not to sell and buy water out of the district, they're not allowed to legally. But they can sure augment water out of here, if they had, if we had excess water and can augment it so that the guy in Chaffee County could be, you know, if that was available. Well, I would like to know that, and I would, I think our citizens ought to know what is going to happen, what transactions are happening, and we haven't got the time to understand that, unless we're focused on it. And then the other one would be to bring, and to facilitate those issues. Since they don't apparently think that they needed to tell us what was going on, I would think our committee would be engaged to say, I want to, and I want to get that committee down here to talk to our citizens, or I want to get the experts to say, you know, we're thinking about changing a blue line, or we're thinking about whatever it is, let's, let's make sure you're aware of it, or let's just get an education program going periodically, because we get a big turn of people that come and go out of the valley by it and selling land, buying, selling ranches, or in the future, putting wells in, is that going to impact us, you know, and we need to know timely enough so we can figure out what we want to do, what stand, we would like to take, what our citizens want us to do. So I think it would be a, a good idea, I don't know what to call it, get a group together, I do know that the people I've talked to would like to see a, more interaction going on, Randy Russ said he'd participate, Scott Geary said he would, Keith Hood did, I would like other suggestions, maybe, maybe it ought to be the George Medina's, or, what's his name? Maderas. Maderas, or maybe a citizen on the, you know, that's a, a small business, or whatever, somebody that has a vested interest in what the future of water may be, or, you know, and in our strategic plan, for example. We need to know whether it's smart to approve a business, it might look good, but is the impact really considered besides just the, the size of the business, or how many lights they've got, or, or whatever, is there a water issue that we ought to be aware of as a board, to whether we want to approve that application for a special permit, or, you know, whatever, from a planning point of view. So this is just a thought, we don't have to act on it today, I don't think. By the way, Cenderhoff told me, I asked him, have you gotten our letter, and he hadn't gotten it two days ago, or three days ago, for whatever reason, he does, he said he's got it now, and he did say they, that he's going to work, he, he has no position one way or the other on it, he said he's going to take what we've said, and it's going to be worked in that meeting real time on the 14th, so that's just a heads up, what's going to go on in the future on that. But, you know, I don't want to be blindsided anymore, and I'm, and I know Neotis, the rest of the citizens up here, and I know that everybody really knows that we, our future growth, or not, depends on water, and our ability to keep the agricultural businesses going here, which by the way, I got looking at, at that, you look at who's in the Upper Ark, what their, their real businesses are, a lot of it's recreational, water issues, not a lot of, you know, there's a lot of ranches out there, but I don't know what, how much of that's being augmented or not, you know, you've sat in more meetings with the Upper Ark guys, Tom, than I have, they've been on quite a few issues on, on storing water underground and on surface, but I think we're the last of the bunch that we really do need to have some storage up here, I think, of some kind, that we ought to be careful on how people develop that one way or the other. So anyway, just a thought, just some, you know, whatever you, you guys think, we can talk more about that, and, because we got time to deal with it, I don't know what Upper Ark's going to do, I know they're not going to quit, they're not, they got rights up here, they're going to keep working, and we're going to have to work with them and other this week. Any thoughts?
Well, certainly I think we need to have a better awareness of water in this county, both as commissioners and for the citizens of the county. I've been approached by several different individuals, water right holders in the county, that feel like we should withdraw from Upper Ark and look at developing a local water conservancy district. If that were to come to the table, certainly I think a committee would be appropriate to start that process. Are you kind of thinking, I don't want to use the word watchdog, but it's used a lot, but an oversight committee to keep track of what's going on?
More, that has to, I think that a part of, it's not the only thing, I'm not looking at this as being, I don't think, my personal opinion is, I don't think we, we could, I don't know how a county could set up its own conservancy board, and have enough wherewithal to be able to go to all the things that are necessary to spend the money, to fight things or to argue things, we can do small things like we've done already, we can issue an objection, I don't know, but maybe they, in the future, if we grow, maybe, maybe that's true. But then I asked, the, the, bottom line is, the state has all, has set up these conservancy districts to keep the water in the state, they don't care, you know, they set up these, these things, and they keep the, the district itself, they gave them some boundaries, what they can and can't do within their, in their legally, to buy and sell the water, they want to keep it in the state, but that doesn't keep it necessarily from being sold into, and sold out of that district, you know, by a farm down there, and a local guy here that's not involved in that, they can legally sell their water anywhere. A rancher up here could say, okay, fine, let's sell it to Pueblo, that's out of the Upper Ark district. So I don't know, it's, it's something that, when those kinds of things happen, we ought to be aware of, and maybe even the Upper Ark didn't have enough wherewithal, meaning the resources and the money to fight a big ticket guy. Matter of fact, I think it was Scott Geary or somebody told me about a, a guy that said he wanted to sell his water, and, and I'm going to sell it, and you haven't got enough money to fight, I got more money than you do, you know, to fight the issue, whatever it was, so that's going to always be the case.
So, Haley.
Oh, yeah.
I've given a lot of thought to this, as, and we all have, you've obviously done a lot of homework on this, my biggest concern is, in a macro sense, that Upper Ark, instead of being our ally, has viewed us as our adversary. And I think most people I talk to, and I've talked to a lot, not as many as you do, I'm not in the same realm as the farming community as you guys are, but I spoke to a lot of people who look at Upper Ark as our adversary and not our ally, and they should be our ally.
Right.
And they're very mad, and it's not just, it's not just recent, it's been going on for a long time. 2009, when a plan was promoted, is maybe when the most adversarial adversaries started, and it's kind of progressed since then. Certainly, our Upper Arkansas Conservancy District has done nothing to help themselves by doing things behind our back, voting when Mr. Donley's not there, keeping it away from our ex-officio member who certainly would have reported to us what was going on, had he had any idea. I don't want to use the term snake in the grass, but that's kind of a term I, that's the, my personal feeling of how they operate. I've been approached multiple times about, why don't we do our own, in fact, we had a gentleman here just the other day.
Hi, Joe.
Mr. Gulliver, Terry Gulliver, who has expertise in breaking off and doing your own augmentation plan, if truly we're going to keep the water within this county, our own augmentation plan makes perfectly good sense, perfectly good sense, because what we would do is, we would say, water will stay within our county, period. And, and I'm, I'm not a rancher, I've never been a rancher, I mean, I learned which end of a cow you get milk out of not long ago, I mean, physiologically, of course, but I mean, I don't profess to have the kind of knowledge that the ranchers and the farmers have, I, I don't know, but my understanding is, our water cannot leave this county, it cannot, because there's no one bringing it back in to replace it. Therein lies the issue, where the upper end is going downhill, we give it to someone down below us, it is not coming back. Okay, so, so let me just finish. I think your suggestion may have some significant merit, I'd like to talk a lot more about it if we decide to move forward. Hang on, hang on. At least it will have the net, it will be an interim step before the county turns around and says, Upper Ark, we're out of here, okay? That, and, and what I'm really concerned about, if the water board approves, the water court approves this, and we decide to do our own thing, too bad, we're stuck. So if we're going to do something, you do it soon, I mean, within next year or two, however long it's going to take to work. This is a major, major problem, and if these people, and I don't mean to say these people, those guys, but if the Upper Arkansas Conservancy District actually sat down and said, we're allies, let's work together to form an alliance to make sure that we're protecting Custer County, I'm great. The problem with Upper Ark is, it's not just Custer County, it encompasses a much larger area, and their alliance is not to Custer County, it is to themselves first, and then everybody they serve. Therein lies the problem for me, you will serve yourself wonderfully well, you will serve, if you have 10 masters, you're going to have to divide it up, I have, I have real issues. I'm sorry, that's where I feel.
No, I'm, I'm 100% with you, but my, my problem is, we can pass a law that says we're going to keep the water in the county, you cannot, unless you can buy it, keep it here.
I agree with that.
If a guy wants to sell it out, he's going to sell it out, ta-da, as bitter.
I agree.
So you can't do that, what you can do though, is, is get enough help, if you had an alliance, and if they were doing what we want them to do, and you build that trust, I, I don't care what happens, I can understand how it evolved, you take a wild, in Woolley County, like we were in the 60s and the 50s, not any laws of any kind, any regulation we wanted, but we're free here, and a guy has water rights, he, he wanted to do what he wanted to, and then when they came up here and tapped wells in the ground, to, they were, the first thing they think is they're going to take my water, they're going to make it meter, and I'm going to have to pay for my own water, I mean, lots of rumors, and it was a problem with how they publicized it, and made people aware of what was going on, and then they would fight with each other, and things evolved. But now they've got a process set up, it is what it is, we, I want to be able, from my point of view, to be able to leverage the good of that reunion, and maybe if they are here to help us, then show us how you're going to do it. And it isn't done by putting a boundary up here and saying, all right, boom, it's there, too bad, we own the water rights, and we're, we're going to buy and sell within our legal rights, they can do that, they can buy and sell that water on the Cankey's Door from here on out, they own it. So, and I'm not advocating we sell it to them either, you know, it would be nice if the ranchers up here decided to, as part of that process, build these storage, we, we can't even build storage in the wilderness area, you know, it's a wilderness area, although I think on the borders, I've seen, and I did some research on that too, there are places where they have allowed, for example, they, they yielded, and you can put a motor vehicle on Rainbow Trail, in wilderness area, you're not supposed to do that at all, but they've, they've got certain things you can and can't do. But we need people to help us do that, you and I and Tom can't do it, you know?
If I may, so this board commission group, whatever you call it, doesn't really matter, whatever the name of it is, this group of citizens with a common goal, how do you envision, or maybe you don't at this point, how do you envision to hold the Upper Arkansas Conservancy District in check to make sure that, I mean, so far, it's been behind the back.
So what I, I, that was an issue, and I did, that's one of the reasons, I talked to Cenderhoff a couple of weeks ago when this first came up, and then last night, I said the same thing. Well, I can see, if you really do have a committee, and you really do work issues that people care about within that county, or within that small part of, of a county where there is an issue, then you ought, we need somebody to help focus that, and I don't want to see it coming to the commissioners by themselves, it ought to be somebody that's focused here, that would work with them, and that's the alliance that we have to hold them to initially, and, oh, by the way, we can sit in any public meeting they want, they've got over there too, but we haven't got the time to do it all the time either, and, and that's why if we focus a couple of people that care about keeping the water here, and working with them to help us, then, then I can see, you said, it's just like the United States got set up, when the colonies said, I'm going to shake hands, and we'll have this loose alliance, you've got to, you've got to start cooperating together, instead of that, we got to overcome this, them, us, they're against us attitude, and they won't do it unless they start, you know, trust, we got to trust each other somehow, but you got to start. And so, that's what I, I would like to see the charter of this committee being that interface that represents the water interests of this county specifically, and are really focused on, on listening out there and saying, okay, so you have a project you're going to do in Fremont County, it's like the water, the guys on the road and bridge down there want to tap the water so they can go water their roads, is that going to hurt us or not? It sounds like that's just an issue down there, but it's not, you know, they, they want to be able to augment that water if it's dry. So, and then that way, the committee can bring that attention to us as commissioners, if it needs some, some, just like they did, I mean, it came up out of the clear blue, right? All of a sudden, boom, they, they've got a, a blue line that they're putting in there, and we found out after the fact, if we can find out that that's what they're doing. Plus, I don't know, they, they call a program by whatever names they got, you know, you got to know the codes too, you know, and you'd only do that by being involved with them.
Can I interject?
Sure.
The county has absolutely no authority to regulate water.
That's right.
And, I mean, to have some kind of a board or a committee, or commissioner, we want to call it, that's somehow created by the commissioners, and you're talking about augmentation and everything, it sounds like we're trying to dip our toes in that water, we're forbidden to.
No, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying that what, just like we found out now, we can't tell them they can't do it, they're going to go do whatever they're going to do, they'll either withdraw us, it won't matter if they withdraw us or not, they're going to continue to do what they're going to do, but we need to be aware, our citizens need to be aware, and, you know, what, why, why are there county commissioners on those boards today, you know, Chaffee County's got their chairman of the board sits on that.
Well, if it's a watchdog committee of some kind, that's fine, but I don't see that it's something that the board of county commissioners should be involved in, setting it up or organizing it, it's, it needs to be citizens getting together and forming some.
Well, I could, sure, I mean, is that what we want to do, or do we want to be proactive as the representative of the citizens to help focus that? I'm not saying they report to, that, that's why I say I don't want to be a board that has any authority, because we don't on water issues, we have the authority to, to pay attention to it, and we have the issue of if somebody applies for a, a business permit to us, do we grant it or not? Well, we got to make sure that the water issues were tended to, the, the restrictions on, the recent, whatever that issue is, before we would grant something.
That's what planning and zoning.
That's what planning and zoning does. Anyway, that's a thought, I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud.
No, I, you know, there was, there was, and you're talking about resurrecting the water committee that Custer County had before.
And the board of commissioners at that time did set it up.
And, and I certainly feel that the people most impacted by the water, which is really everybody, but certainly the farmers, and the two towns, and George Maderas, and everybody else who's impacted by water, needs to, I mean, it certainly makes sense for them to have a group of, so that they can sit in a meeting and say, here's the issues I'm concerned about, and then bring those to the park.
To the right people, yeah.
I think we're going to have to see it, I mean, for that to work, whether the county's involved or not, it's, to me, it appears that it's going to have to be a fundamental change of attitude over the upper arc.
So where do we begin, do we begin in the next meeting?
I'm not, I'm not knocking what you're saying. I'm not, I'm not knocking what you're saying, because maybe this is the first step to look in and say, let's start working together.
The reason I brought it up now is for that very reason, Jay, is because we're gonna be over there on Thursday, and, and, and that would be a time to test them, start testing them. You, you guys admitted you screwed up, that came up here and said, let's fix it, and if you're willing to work with us, how are you willing to work with us?
Well, they also said that if we sent them a letter telling we didn't want the county in this new plan, they'd take us out. You just said that.
I said, I didn't know, Cindahoff didn't say no.
Okay, but Cindahoff, it sounds like, might not be on board with that. So...
Yeah, wait, let me tell you specifically what he said, so we're not confused. He said, he has no position he's gonna tell me right now, 'cause it's up to his board.
And that is a responsible, appropriate.
Right. And so that's what I meant. I, I do know that they're gonna talk it over, and we don't know what they're gonna do until we see.
He is board spokesman. Make that comment. It wasn't just an off-the-cuff gentleman.
That's right.
So, you know, I think if you wanna be involved in helping a group of significant water users to kind of form a coalition of some sort, to work with, I think that would be a positive step.
Sure.
I mean, that's just my thought.
Well, and, and that's why I think the three of us need to be on board, because just like Tom said a minute ago, somebody said, let's go set up a county water conservancy district. We can't, we don't have the authority to do that.
Well, we can't on our own, we could certainly petition a court to do that. We have to have a court order taken.
We can, the county.
We can facilitate that.
Correct. The county could be, behind that, if, if that was something, that would be in the best interest of this county. I believe that. Council, he certainly told me I'm wrong, and he'd be right by telling me I'm wrong, or whatever. But you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to, to bring it up, I wanted to be on record at this meeting to, because we are responsible, and we've made those statements, we are, made the issue with this last filing, and the filings aren't gonna stop. Either it's Upper Ark, or it's gonna be a local guy.
This is not the end of, whether they remove us from this plan, there will be another plan down the road, we all agree with that. In fact, I'll tell you that. So, you know, if we have a plan for the future, then I'll call.
All right, we don't need to beat a dead horse now. I think the next step is the Thursday meeting, and we'll see where that goes. But if it's in the back of our minds, and, and people care, I know the ranchers up here care, and they, they do see a need for that, and I know we care as, as we build our strategic vision for the future. All right, done.
Good. Thank you. Public comment?
Not right now.
I would move adjourned.
I'll second it.
Move and second and adjourn, all in favor, say aye. I'll put his name. Call a BOCC meeting to order, let the record show, today is March 6, 2019, the time is 3 o'clock PM. We are now in session for a posted meeting. I would ask Mr. Dreher, sir, would you care to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I would.
Thank you.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Roll call, ma'am?
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Candor.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Here.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And clerk to the board Kelly Camper, present.
Purpose of the meeting this afternoon is consideration of hiring a VSO candidate. The commissioners met this afternoon with some citizens from the community. We interviewed two candidates for the position of the VSO officer job. And so with that, I, Chair would defer the floor to motions and/or comments of the process, or whatever you so desire.
Question of the process. Will we during this process refer to the candidates by number?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to verify that.
So we wanna discuss them, or do we wanna tell you what we want, what we think?
Technically, I believe that for parliamentary law, we should, the chair should have a motion to second, and then discussion, and then, so we can vote.
Tell you why a motion involves what, a motion to hire?
A VSO motion, it would be to hire whoever you recommend, basically.
By number.
By number.
I move that the county offer the VSO position to candidate number two.
Actually, a, no, sorry, that was a motion, so we do need a second, my apologies. I would second the motion. Been moved and seconded that the county commissioners offer a position to candidate number two for the officer for our VSO office. Maker of the motion, you certainly have the right of first.
I'll start the discussion.
Or not.
Does he want, did you want him to discuss it first?
No, I did not want him to.
What's the protocol?
I did not want him to, I'm just saying, as the maker of the motion, he has a right to first debate, but he chose not to use it, so you're perfectly right.
I will open my mouth when the time comes.
That's something we've never really adhered to, but it is law, that the maker of the motion has first right of debate any time of year she chooses to discuss.
You better defend yourself. All right, I, I'll start off, just to make a comment, very strong candidates, this has been a hard, it's a great opportunity to talk with the, the people that had, first of all, put applications in, get the field down to where we interviewed the people we interviewed, and we're a lucky county to have the people to select from. It's not a case of where, where we gotta go back to the drawing board, so that's the first thing. They were very strong, very close together, in my mind, on, both capable of doing the job, say, let's put it that way. However, I felt that candidate number one is stronger than candidate number two, Jay. And I have that for several reasons. One is, we discussed leadership and, and strategic thinking and those kinds of things, and I felt candidate number one had a longer, a better vision of, of what the VSO, what the VA looked like in five years from now. I think he showed a, a good way to move forward with the other entities in the county, to help bring out the VA's support, and work together with, for example, the trails initiatives, we've got other groups within the county, to help the veterans, you know, with, with things. And so from a leadership point of view, I think he could relate better with the people he'll be counsel. So that's a start, why I think he's strong.
Great. Go ahead, sir.
I hear what you're saying, and I concur, in terms of the strength of the candidates, I think we're very, very fortunate to have two very qualified people come forward and offer their services to the county to help our veterans. Just a statement that I've made many times, our veterans are numero uno in our county, and we as a county need to do everything possibly we can to assist them in any way we can. I, I felt, I felt more comfortable with candidate number two. And the things that really led me to that were his commitment to the veterans that he has done on his own, without a job, just, he's done so much for our veterans on his own, that given a position where he can do even more for our veterans, will, I feel will help, will help our veterans even further. He's been very involved, and while the formal education is important, I felt that his on-the-job work was, was excellent. I also paid very close attention to the people in the audience who spoke to me, who spoke to us, and what they felt. And in my opinion, they're kind of the experts, I'm not. So my, my gut reaction followed what they said, because actions speak very loudly already. So I, I'm an advocate for number two.
I certainly agree with Commissioner Candor, too, in my opinion. Outstanding candidates, very, felt very good about the quality of candidates that ended up at the interview process. Obviously, as the saying goes, that's why we get paid the big bucks to make these decisions that sometimes can be hard. I think this is one of those. I appreciate both you gentlemen's opinions and, and perspectives. I also appreciated the input we had from our members of the interview committee as well. Thought those were very insightful, knowledgeable, and made without cranker or favoritism from this perspective. I didn't think, I witnessed a lot of that, I felt we got very honest, forthright recommendations from them. So, I would ask the chair, or the commission, I, I ask you this sincerely, would you prefer a voice vote, a roll call vote, if you have a preference?
Let's talk about it a little more, 'cause, you know, the reason we're debating this is to make sure we're, we're good with the selection. And that's why I, and I was arguing for candidate number one. However, you know, I agree, from what I've heard, and, and the points that you bring up as far as the, the people that also spoke, and, and the points you brought up, you know, I'm good with either one of them, like I said before. And I'm more than happy with the selection of, of number two, so.
I hate to interrupt, Ms. Meredith.
Grant, sorry.
I'm just about to go down, and I sent you an email asking if I could get a bottle of water, please. Yeah, I, this may not need to be said, but I think, well, I know, thank you, ma'am, I really appreciate that. The purpose of debate is for any or all of us to try to convince our fellow commissioners to vote a certain way. I mean, that's what it's all about, that's why there is debate, and typically, that's why the maker of motion would be honored, the first debate, because he made the motion he or she in.
Be strong, be strong.
To get the first lick in. So if we, if there are times when politically, we just wanna voice our perspective on something, that's certainly permissible, in my opinion, but there are times when you might take the stance of, I'm gonna try to convince these other two commissioners to vote just the way I want them to vote. That's how the system works, there's, there's not, it's not arguing, it's not threatening, it's not belittling, it's, hey, you guys, I feel this way, and I want you to vote with me. If you don't, that's fine.
And I feel that's exactly what I did. I said why, who I wanted, and why, hoping that you would go, gosh, that commissioner is so brilliant.
Well, I haven't had a chance to say that yet.
That he was able to sort down that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I guess the point.
He didn't pound the table enough.
Oh, I would never do that. Well, I'm not gonna say.
Oh, imagine.
Yeah, so I just, again, you know, the only time we really get to talk like this is when we're in a meeting.
That's right.
And so, I just wanna encourage all three of us, never to feel like we can't lobby ourselves and each other to vote for one.
And I think he makes some good points, and he, your candidate you suggested does have a better-rounded personality, I think, to handle the job. I'm good with that.
Yeah, and I'll make my decision today based on what my gut feeling was about how I thought I would relate if I were on the other side of the desk. And so, that's, that's kind of where I'm headed. So, again, continued debate, I'm not trying to cut anybody off.
Actually, then the other point is, I'm confusing the two numbers here a little bit, but the strategic value was number two, on my view, in the statement I said.
I did rank the candidates, and I will share that, because I think that's only fair. The other people that sat in on the interview committee, of course, shared their ranking with us, and so I will do the same thing. I have candidate number one ranked at thirty-two, I'm sorry, candidate number one was ranked at thirty-one, and I ranked candidate number two at thirty-four. So that's, that concludes my discussion, desire for discussion or debate. Any further discussion before we proceed to vote? Again, I would ask that, well, once the vote is taken, then we can attach a name to the number of candidate and be well within the privacy rules. So, please, once it's done, and the name is announced, go, oh, wait a minute, I got my numbers mixed up.
Yeah, better be sure of that name.
That may, that may happen.
We can't have that happen once, all right.
So, hearing no further discussion, we will proceed to vote. All in favor of offering a contract to candidate number two? I asked once, I didn't get it, so, go ahead.
This is not a contract position, is this point of order? This is an employee of the county, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, would you mind if I ask you not to use the word contract, or contract?
Did I say contract?
You said, offer the job to.
Did I say contract or job?
You said contract.
And I didn't intend to do that, 'cause we've also had that conversation. I, I thought of it earlier, and I, no, no, you're certainly, point well taken. All in favor of offering the job of the VSO officer to candidate number two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay, motion carries, we will offer the contract to candidate number two. Now, a point of order, I'm called on.
You said contract.
Gosh dang it. Well, that was when you teach for twenty-five years, and worry about a contract.
Break out of your outline, Tom, break out of your outline.
So we will offer the job, the position of VSO officer to candidate number two. And I say candidate number two because I wonder, counsel, shall we continue referring to these candidates by number until we find out? Because I believe Ms. Don is prepared to make a phone call this afternoon.
I can't imagine candidate number two would not accept. The money was not an issue.
I definitely couldn't.
So, you're.
I think it's word contract.
And candidate number two being one, Mr. John Carroll, so the motion was to, and don't you even, to offer the position to him. So, is there any further announcements and/or, it would have to be pretty significant business to come before the group?
It's not a business, but I truly, truly appreciate your input and your help in helping me particularly make a decision, a very difficult.
Got the same here.
Well, it's pleasure.
Sincerely.
Honored, did you ask?
A wealth of knowledge and information that I would never presume to come to the table with. I mean, I would have, without some research or going to folks like yourselves and asking questions, would not have been capable on my own to do that, 'cause I just don't have the background, so.
I told Jay a little earlier during the break, I was worried that we might, whether we would get one good candidate, and then to find two, right?
Yeah.
That is so amazing.
Hot caliber.
If I may ask, just a quick question, upon acceptance of the offer, when would the employment period start?
Yesterday.
So, I would hope.
Yesterday, maybe.
I told him I did not know a date, and he did accept. I said I did not know a date, but I, I said I thought that the commissioners would think sooner rather than later, since we have an.
I would, I personally would defer to Roger, and.
What kind of transition?
Today is Wednesday, so he will not be back until next Tuesday. I would suggest to the group, then, that maybe we look at trying to bring him on on March the 12th, to coincide. to coincide with Roger being here and that's the only reason.
That's a good idea.
Hadn't been to that, I might have suggested the 15th, but the 12th probably. Are we in agreement, gentlemen?
Yep.
Can I just begin?
Yeah.
Then myself, so.
Well, separate, separate from that slightly, I am prepared to try to hang in there as a teacher as long as it's appropriate, as long as it looks like there's that initial need. But then there'll be a, I can step away as.
And that was hopefully a conversation we were going to have or I was going to bring up after we deal with number one, that Mrs. Haw, for the record, Mrs. Hawby did indicate that she contacted Mr. Carroll. He did accept the job. And we will approach with the idea of starting date of March the 12th. So, transition conversation. In your opinion, sir, what would you guess? Let's go on that premise, at least for now, that when we talk about how long, we're talking about two days a week of your time. Is that correct? Or is it possible?
Or that can be stepped back too.
Okay, okay. Or could it move forward and say three or four days a week for a couple of weeks or not? I don't know what your schedule is.
I could do three, but, you know, he's, he's going to, I think, learn pretty quickly. After the first week, I'll have a better idea about that.
Good. So would we, tentatively, would we be okay talking for at least a couple of weeks, two days a week for the transition period and then address it as we need?
And you said you would come if he had an issue any time, right? I mean, you would come back and say if he had a, something he stumbled into.
I can just be on call.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
So the second Wednesday of a two-week period would be March 20th. So, and I don't know, we have to chisel it in stone, but I'd like to at least identify that maybe the 12th and 13th and the 19th and the 20th would be formal transition days on your calendar and his.
Right.
And then the assumption is that he would be full-time starting on the 12th, whether Roger's here or not.
Right, right.
That makes sense to me, though.
Pardon me?
That makes sense.
Okay, all right, so.
I did a rose. I just hurried and get them both out of the way.
So our thinking.
You're welcome. You got a cast this time.
Our thinking is that if Mr. Carroll agrees to come on March 12th, that he would work with Roger 12th and 13th and then again on the 19th and 20th.
And in between those times, he'll have a lot of online training he has to complete as well.
So 12th, 13th, 19th, 20th.
Subject to change as necessary.
And then Mr. Roger has said he would certainly be on call for, I'm assuming mostly probably by the phone, but I suppose if he had to come up, he could if he was really hung up.
It looked like that was really necessary.
Good. Does that cover the basis for that?
One last thing. I just want to thank Roger for stepping in when we needed him. He's doing an absolutely outstanding job. I thank you very much.
Well, it was a real pleasure. It really was. If I could take a moment.
Yes, certainly.
I'd been fishing out here for forty years. And when I decided it was time to come live in Colorado, West Cliff is where I was, thought I was coming to. And had it not been that Rye was half the distance to my job in Walsenburg, I'd have been a resident of West Cliff because I had already had such a high opinion of the community. Nothing that I've experienced in the month and a half I've been coming up here has changed my mind about that. It's grown. It's grown. And I think the way this community operates and the way you guys conduct yourselves has just reinforced everything that I thought I knew about this place.
You know, I, it's always a risk when you go to compliment somebody and it's, I'd be remiss if I didn't as well as, of course, I'm sure the commissioners feel the same way. But I find myself thinking something and I'm not very good about actually saying that to somebody. And I'm going to say this to you because from, really from day one, I've appreciated your spirit and your demeanor. Not to overreact, but I thought this is a man that I should try to follow after.
Thank you.
I know. I don't know where that came from. Yeah, I thought if I could model myself after you, I'd be doing fine.
Yeah, what a calming experience. Thank you so much.
So thank you. I appreciate that. Anything else, gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
Yes, go ahead.
The grant administrator for the state of Colorado, Gail Hoggland, has contacted me. The governor's Board for Veterans Affairs wants to hold its June meeting in West Cliff.
Wow.
And I said, "Absolutely, we'd love to have you." And it's obviously an open meeting to everybody and I'm giving you heads up now that they're planning on being here June 7th from 9:00 AM till noon plus lunch.
June 7th?
Yeah.
Do we have a meeting, I mean?
I haven't figured out of any big enough to take them.
Talk about that because I don't know her mom.
No, it's not near. Well, we might, I have to think about the bowling alley. She's either that or Lutheran Church, it's one or the other.
My vision hasn't cleared up yet, if the truth be known. So June 7th.
June 7th.
We are, we will be having a BOCC meeting in the morning. Should be done around noon, 12:30 at the latest.
Well, their meeting, their meeting will be from 9:00 AM till 1:00.
Okay.
And if you could, you're all welcome and.
What does the meeting do? You said it's a grant writing thing. What do they do?
These are the people who actually.
That actually dealt, push it out. They have the funds they distribute.
These are the governor's representatives for Veterans Affairs and Military Affairs in Colorado, okay?
That's going to be pretty big.
They're the ones who say, "We want to hear from all the veterans. We want to hear from your community. We want to hear from your people." So we know what we pay to the governor as an issue.
So it's a community meeting then?
It's open to everybody.
So they want to hear from the veterans. So that's going to take a big, big outfit.
Yeah, it's going to take a large place to put those people. Because the last time we had the VA up here for a big meeting like this from the, from the health system, we used the community center at the Lutheran Church, remember, and it was full.
Yeah. So you might consider talking to the school, using the West gym?
Yeah, that would be a thing to do.
I don't think the East gym probably would fly, but I bet you they'd let you use the West gym.
Yes, that wants a bar game too.
And multiple rooms is not big enough.
So I'll, I'll approach them.
Yeah, that gym is the best idea.
Might even save us the money of having to contract with.
And they do have a kitchen, so you can work a kitchen deal.
Yeah, I wanted to check something too while we were talking. Our June 6th and 7th meeting is Thursday and a Friday, which is fairly unusual for us to meet late in the week.
We may want to move that.
Because some or all, I doubt all, that some of us will be at a three-day conference in Colorado Springs. That's why we moved that.
That's why you moved that.
And I got that Mountain Connect I wanted to hit again.
Yeah, the 4th of June through the 6th, I think. Oh, I thought it was a different week. But anyway, that's why typically, you know, people say, "Well, you meet on Tuesday and Wednesday." Well, we moved it because of that CCI conference in Colorado Springs, so.
Let's see when it is.
That is why probably that we would not be there in the morning because we'll be in BOCC.
The board only meets one day a month and they ask, they specifically ask to come up here. And apparently they like us.
Well, we should try to.
That's good.
Try to roll out the carpet as best we can.
Yeah.
So if there's anything we can do.
Something we can do and I'm definitely going to make sure that they get bought lunch.
How many people?
Probably fifteen to eighteen members of the state will be here for this. You have the eight members on the board and then you have their spouses, possibly some will come. And then you have the actual Division of Military Veterans Affairs employee management type people who will be coming to the meeting. Perhaps even the general in charge of the Colorado National Guard. So we're going to, I'm figuring it's going to be quite a few people here. But at the same time, they want to open it up and get as much input as they can from us around here.
School might be a good option with the kitchen being there if you wanted to bring in ladies auxiliary or cattlewomen or whatever group to do a lunch thing. That kitchen might be available, so.
That Mountain Connect is later.
Yeah, I thought it was a different week, so. Okay, very good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Further, I do not want to say further items of business because we can't not have that. But anything else to come before the board, gentlemen?
No, sir.
Chair would entertain the motion?
I move we adjourn.
Moving second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post nay. Ms. Don, if you want.